Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the San Ramon Valley Unified School District Board of Education meeting. We want to let the public know that we are video recording this meeting. Recording is being livestreamed on the district's YouTube channel. Attendance?
Hello, everyone. I'm Travis Hodges, student trustee on the Board of Education.
Good evening. I'm Laura Bratt, and I represent Area Three.
Good evening. Rachel Hurd, representing Area Five.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jesse Van Zee, and I represent Area One.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. I'm Susanna Ordway, representing Area Four.
And I'm Shelley Clark, and I represent Area Two. And this is my first official, regular meeting of the Board of Education as your president. I just have one. I'm going to take a point of privilege here just for a moment. As this is my first day on the job, I ask for your kindness and support. It's truly an honor to serve alongside my fellow board members and to work on behalf of the students of the San Ramon Valley Unified School District. Tonight, we have some important discussions and ultimately have to make some difficult decisions that will affect our students, staff, and families. I hope that we can, we remember why we are all here. We want the very, very best for our students. While we may not see eye to eye always, I believe that by approaching our work with respect, kindness, and a shared commitment to our students' success, we can navigate these challenges together. Thank you. Now, the Pledge of Allegiance. Travis, do you want to lead us?
I pledge allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going to start the meeting with the best part of the meeting, and that is our student recognition. So if my fellow board members will follow me. This evening, for student recognition, we are proud to celebrate the outstanding achievements of our high school fall sports teams. These athletes have demonstrated exceptional skill, dedication, and sportsmanship throughout the season. Their hard work and teamwork have led to great performances and inspiring moments, both on and off the field, track, greens, pool, and court, everywhere. We also want to thank their coaches, whose leadership and guidance is instrumental in helping their athletes reach their full potential in sports and in life. The Athletic Director APs at each high school have shared the names and accomplishments of their teams with us. I will call our students up by school and by sport. Some of the athletes being recognized this evening were not able to join us. However, I will announce all names. Coaches, if you are here, please join us up front as well for photo. The Cal High Flag Football. Cal's flag football team had an outstanding season with an undefeated record in league play, winning the E-Bowl championship and finishing third at NCS. Representing the team are Ashley Woon, Priya Misri, Olivia Horton, Michaela Nielsen, Haley King, and coaches Frank Burina and Brad Bretzig. Next is Cal High Cross Country. This year, the cross-country team had some notable achievements. Runner Emily Bellinger earned a spot in the CIF meet and took home 73rd place, and the boys' team advanced to state for only the third time in school history and earned a 19-place finish. Congratulations to Emily Bellinger, Ishan Hussain, Aiden Dubay, Jonathan Mills Lawrence, and Coach Nick Shea. Next, we have Cal High Women's Tennis. Sophomore tennis star Sakchija Kumath had another great season, earning a third-place finish at NCS and a fourth-place finish at E-Bowl. Congratulations to her and Coach Manny Vasquez. Next is Dougherty Valley Women's Golf. Michelle Ho had another great year, representing the Wildcats. She was the E-Bowl and NCS champion and earned fourth place at CIF. Congratulations to Michelle and Coach Anthony Bilezi. Dougherty Valley Cross Country Team. The cross-country team had lots to celebrate last season, with the boys placing second and girls third in NCS competition, the 20th and 24th respectively at state. Individual top finishers at state were Aaron Sagaru, Anaya Kumar, and coaches Lauren Nikaso and Ralph Gowan. Okay, anybody else want to take a photo? Okay, so now we go to Montevista Women's Tennis. The doubles team of Sophia Wright and Stephanie Cowe had a tremendous year. Not only were they undefeated in league and the E-Bowl champions, they also won NCS after going undefeated for eight matches. Congratulations, Sophia, Stephanie, and Coach Rich Fabro. Now to Montevista Women's Cross Country. The cross-country team took home the championship, title, and E-Bowl and NCS this year, finished seventh at CIF and had outstanding individual performances by several athletes. Representing the team are Alexandra Powell, Ally Turns, Ava Padilla, Daria Maggi, Nadia Makarova, Emmy Tang, Kaylee O'Connell, Sienna Wong, and Coach Patrick Wales Dynan. Now to San Ramon Valley High School Women's Volleyball. After another successful season, SRV Women's Volleyball captured first place at state when in the CIF D2 Championship. Representing the team are captains Sophia Vella, Lucy Chernock, Ally Cook, and Coach Brian Fujinaga. San Ramon Valley Women's Water Polo. Congratulations to the team for an exceptional season culminating in winning NCS, as well as first place at the state CIF competition. Representing the team are captains, team and captains Natalie Buck, Brooke Temkin, Coach Heather Johnston. San Ramon Valley Women's Cross Country. After another solid season, the team went on to place 12th at the state competition. Representing the team are Emma Davidson, Haley Gunderson, Isla Muston, and Coach Rick Nie. And then we have San Ramon Valley Women's Tennis. Our last student to recognize tonight is Monica Tekke, who, after a very successful tennis season at the San Ramon Valley, went on to place first and become the 2024 NCS Singles Champion. What a great achievement. She is coached by Frank Haswell. Are so proud of our talented... There was one omission from the San Ramon Valley Women's Cross Country Team, and that was Ally Long. So if she's here, please come up, Ally, so we can take a picture with you. We are proud, so proud of all of our talented athletes and their coaches. Thank you. Okay, so now we have to report out what we did in closed session. I don't see it here. There we go. Okay, so I need to call for a motion to accept the stipulated suspended expulsion agreement for case number 01/24-25.
I'll make a motion to accept the stipulated expulsion.
I'll second that.
The motion was made by Board Member Bratt and seconded by Board Member Van Zee. Roll call vote. Board Member Bratt?
Aye.
Board Member Hurd?
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee?
Aye.
Board Member Ordway?
Aye.
Board Member Clark?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Okay, so we move on to 8.1, Acceptance of Minutes. We have a revision to the December 10, 2024 mini-meeting minutes printed in front of us. May I have a motion to accept the revised minutes from the December 10, 2024 meeting?
I move to accept the revised minutes.
Second. The motion was made by Board Member Hurd and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call vote. Student Board Member Hodges?
Aye.
Board Member Bratt?
Aye.
Board Member Hurd?
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee?
Aye.
Board Member Ordway?
Aye.
Board Member Clark?
Aye.
The motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we go to 8.2. That's minutes from the December 19, 2024 workshop. May I have a motion to accept the minutes from the workshop?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the board workshop.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Board Member Van Zee and seconded by Board Member Bratt. Roll call vote. Student Board Member Hodges?
Aye.
Board Member Bratt?
Aye.
Board Member Hurd?
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee?
Aye.
Board Member Ordway?
Aye.
Board Member Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
So now we move on to Agenda Approval. May I have a motion to accept the agenda for this evening?
I move to accept the agenda for tonight.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Board Member Ordway and seconded by Board Member Bratt. Roll call vote. Student Board Member Hodges?
Aye.
Board Member Bratt?
Aye.
Board Member Hurd?
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee?
Aye.
Board Member Ordway?
Aye.
Board Member Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
And then on to Consent Agenda Approval. Consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and are approved by combining them into a single vote. Only a member of the board may request that a consent item be removed from the consent agenda to be considered and voted on separately. The public may comment on a consent agenda item before the board approves the consent agenda. Are there any public comments?
There are not.
Okay, so may I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll move that we accept consent.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Board Member Hurd and seconded by Board Member Van Zee. Roll call vote. Student Board Member Hodges?
Aye.
Board Member Bratt?
Aye.
Board Member Hurd?
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee?
Aye.
Board Member Ordway?
Aye.
Board Member Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, now just a little bit of housekeeping. We have a lot of people here tonight, so I wanted to give you some of the guidelines that we use for the meeting. I'd like to take a moment to review how public comment works during the board's public meeting. If you would like to make a public comment during the meeting, you can find yellow speaker cards on the table by the door. Please speak to a staff member if you have any questions. You will have an opportunity to make a comment on agendized items when we come to that item. For comments on items that are not on the agenda, please submit your card at 10.3 Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items on tonight's agenda. Each speaker has a time limit of three minutes with a timer shown on the screen while you are speaking. This time limit will be enforced to ensure fairness. Please be aware that we may interrupt you or redirect you to the correct time to speak if your comment relates to a different agendized item or if it is not within our jurisdiction. As president, I reserve the right to announce a last call for speaker card submissions. Please have your speaker card submitted when public comment begins for the agenda item you would like to comment on. The views expressed during the public comment are those of the individual speaker. The absence of a response from the board or district staff does not imply agreement. The district believes in an inclusive, welcoming, and safe environment during its meetings for all of our community. Please be mindful that students are in the room and watching virtually. We are all here to support them and to support their educational experience. Thank you for joining us tonight. We very much appreciate your engagement. So now we'll go on to 10.1, Reports to the Board. And tonight, the school highlight is Windermere Ranch Middle School. And Principal Sharon Balthazar is here. Welcome.
Good evening to all of our board members, Superintendent Kamik, and everyone here tonight for allowing me to share just a few highlights of my wonderful school, Windermere Ranch Middle School. I'm Sharon Balthazar, principal at Windermere Ranch, and I am truly privileged to be able to serve this community of students, staff, and families. At Windermere Ranch Middle School, we cultivate a community of empathetic, critical thinkers, building upon our strengths as lifelong learners. As you can see, our mission perfectly aligns with our district's learner profile. We expect that our work with students helps grow them into the critical thinkers, creative contributors, intentional collaborators, adaptable learners, and effective communicators that this world needs. Our work is grounded in identity and belonging with an understanding that this impacts each student in their learning and how they interact with each other. We believe that this is essential to cultivating a thriving student. And when we create a learning environment that honors and celebrates each student's unique culture, background, and experiences, we empower them to bring their whole selves into the classroom. And this is where that confidence comes from, and it allows them the deeper connections with their peers and their own learning. And when this happens, they're more likely to take those learning risks that help them stretch their brains a little bit further when learning new concepts and reach out a little more to connect with others who may be different than them. This belonging, this community, is what fosters resilience, reduces the anxiety that many teenagers face, and encourages more meaningful collaboration. It's everything that our students need and everything that we all need in this room. Our Visual and Performing Arts Program is a perfect example of our students working together to create amazing pieces that benefit our entire community and we can be proud of. From our extremely skilled artists in our beginning and advanced art program in drama productions to our award-winning chorus bands, strings, and wind ensembles, there's no shortage of talent at Windermere Ranch. In fact, this weekend, we have seven students playing in the All-State Honor Band in Sacramento. This weekend, alongside the best of California's musicians, and we have a record number of 19 students participating in the All-Northern Honor Band at ULP next month. Our library is another important pillar in our community. It's more than a place where kids borrow books. It's a hub for student connections, from long-time trivia and games, blind dates with a book, and author visits from authors such as San Francisco Chronicle writer and author of family style Chen Pham, to much-needed conversations on digital citizenship and how our students can be upstanders against microaggressions. All of our students have a home in our library. And we have the second highest circulation out of all middle schools and high schools in the district, with almost 10,000 books borrowed in the first semester and about 24,000 books last school year. So we do definitely have a community of readers. At Windermere, we also believe that there's a leader in every student. Through school, they discover the passions and the interests that will end up driving their own leadership journey. Like all secondary schools, we have our ASB Leadership Class that puts on school-wide social events for the students. They facilitate various charitable fundraising and important monthly school-wide lessons on character traits that every inclusive community needs. And right before winter break, our leadership class brought almost 300 new toys and put on a holiday carnival for the students at our sister school, La Escuelita Elementary School in Oakland. Our student senators have been another example of students leading the way. They have tapped into what our students are most concerned about through surveys, then turned those into a student focus group, which then informed conversation with our adult communities on how we prioritize and how we serve students. We have our web leaders who pair up with sixth graders and any new, and any students new to Windermere every year. And within these past two years, we've had our students taking the lead on our schoolwide wellness days. Our first wellness day was back in 2019, and it was teacher-led. And every year since then, our wellness days have shifted according to the needs of our students. Today, our wellness day is focused on finding and growing a source of wellness in our students to help them tackle the challenges of school, friendships, and home life. Last year, for the first time ever, Wellness Day sessions were led by students with the support of teachers in the classroom. And they helped each other practice, excuse me, and they helped each other practice managing stress and anxieties in ways they didn't even realize were stress relievers. Students can choose from a variety of workshops, from football and soccer to crochet and karaoke, baking in the kitchen, to creating beautiful pieces of art. Wellness days evolved into students taking a step towards the healthiest version of themselves, where they learn to take care of their hearts and minds, because that's what will take care of them in the future in their most stressful moments. Our Unified PE is another way that identity and belonging creates the safety that students need to thrive. This PE class of both general ed students and students in our full-time special education classroom created a ripple effect in our school community that started back in 2022. It grew from a few students in, as few student TAs in PE, to what it is now, an entire school community that has wrapped its arms around our students with the highest needs. Beyond Unified PE, you see our students hanging out at lunch and break, talking in the hallways, and watching out for one another every day. And all of these amazing things happen at Worms, Windermere Ranch, because of the caring staff connections that are made with our students. Our staff supports our student leaders in running their after-school clubs. This year, we have a record-high number of clubs, well over 30, from Math Olympiad to Harry Potter Club, our first-ever Black Student Union to our baking club, and everything in between, including a K-pop club. Our basketball club hosted its first-ever March Madness intramural tournament last spring over the course of several weeks, and we're doing it again this year. I encourage you to stop by. And our staff uses restorative justice practices in their classrooms and across campus to build the kind of community that will take them through hard times and some of the hardest conversations. Our teachers host geography and spelling bees that turn out national and local winners. And our teachers highlight students for their perseverance, compassion, and improvement at our Teacher's Choice Award every spring. This year, we included in our work added support for our FOCAL students. These are students identified by name and by need through our academic and social-emotional well-being screeners and other multiple measures that include CASP and daily attendance. Each of us, from classified to certificated, has a set of FOCAL students that we work with weekly and sometimes even daily. We check in with our FOCAL students, setting mini-goals, and celebrating wins in ways that matter to the students. Through these connections, we are seeing our students feeling more in control of any feelings of anxiety or stress, seeing our students more engaged, coming to school every day. And this week, with report cards coming out, we're seeing higher student achievement. And this week, with report cards coming out, we're seeing higher student achievement than we have in previous years. And our staff would not be able to make any of these caring connections without the support of our families. Our PTSA and Ed Fund have always supported our work with students and give us additional feedback and input on ways to make school as meaningful as possible for their students. Their donations of time and finances allow us the resources we need to challenge our students with love and care. Our PTSA sponsors our wellness days, purchasing supplies and materials for each workshop. They put on their annual heritage night where families showcase their culture through food, dance and song. And they put on parent engagement nights where they engage in topics that are important to them, such as what to expect in high school, as well as how to navigate social media and the internet in safe ways. Our Education Fund is largely responsible for keeping our class size averages lower than most. They fund classroom and school-wide software. They funded what we lovingly call the Big Top, which is a large trade structure in the middle of the courtyard. And they have funded the Windermere Workspace for the past two years, which is an after-school workshop intended for students to do homework, put together study groups, get peer tutoring. And it's this place that's open to all Windermere students and it's an amazing resource for our community. It takes more than one village to raise a child. It takes all of us, Windermere Village or San Ramon Valley Village, a true community of folks that care about each and every single student. James Baldwin noted that the children are always ours, every single one of them. And at Windermere Ranch, we keep this in our hearts and heads every day. I've said before that our many academic accolades of high achievement do not define who we are. They serve as a challenge to us and our service to our students. We are a school for every student. Our next National Blue Ribbon will be for closing the achievement gap for all. And that starts with connection and the shared community support for each and every student. And when we say all our students are all our students, we mean it and we are committed to seeing it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Anyone?
Thank you so much. I got to see you the other day.
Yes.
Briefly, I was struck by the different types of opportunities that you, that staff and the school provide the students. I was really impressed with that. So thank you for all that you do and you have an amazing community and the students and families are lucky to be a part of that.
Thank you. It is a wonderful community for sure.
That was really an outstanding presentation. I mean, I saw aspects of Windermere Ranch that I've never heard emphasized before and you wove all of the good stuff into that. And so you have so much to be proud of and so does your staff and your families and your students. I mean, hearing about the innovative things that your parent groups are doing for your students are just wow. That's all I can say is wow.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for that presentation. I think that all of that stood out to me. But Unified PE is such a cool concept and what you're doing there that really builds on the community that you displayed, that you're trying to cultivate there. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Yeah, just like to echo how wonderful your presentation was. And I know that sometimes, right, middle school, there's a debate whether or not middle school would be, you know, the ages, the kids might be most challenging, right? But what you've shown us, you know, and how you go about you and your staff, connecting with your students and actually helping them find, kind of think about and really celebrating their, their own identity as well as like kind of answering who they are or trying to explore who they are. That's just exemplary. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think what stood out to me was that you are educating the whole child. And academics are very important. We all know that. But some of the other things you're doing are extraordinary. And I love that you highlighted your student senators because that's really an important thing to me as far as us getting student voice, the board being able to hear student voice and we regularly visit the student senate. So thank you for doing that and thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, just want to add one more thing. Thank you so much for all your work to include all of our, all the students on campus. I know Unified PE to echo what Mr. Van Zee was saying. That's something we should have at all of our school sites. That sounds like such an incredible program and it's really great to see that you're building community for everyone. Something else is that the student clubs on campus, having 30-plus, especially at a middle school and seeing how your students are actively not only just engaging in the community, but they're building communities of their own is really impressive to see, especially at such a young age. And I know that they're going to have a lot of success in their future as they go on to high school and beyond. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to 10.2. We have four resolutions tonight. The first one is African-American Black History Month, which is February. And Hong Nguyen, our Equity Director, will give us the presentation.
Good evening, Board Member, Assistant Superintendent, Staff, Students and Community. February is African-American Black History Month. It's a month for us to raise awareness of Black history and culture and beyond. This year's theme from the Association of the Study of African-American Life and history is African-Americans and Labor. The 2005 Black History Month theme focuses on the various and profound ways that work and working of all kinds, free and unfree, skilled and unskilled, vocational and voluntary intersects with the collective experiences of Black people. In 1909, the National Association of Advancement of Color People, NWAACP, was founded. The first Black History Month was observed in 1970 and it got presidential endorsement in 1976. Today, we are fortunate to have a partnership with the Hayward Chapter of NWAACP. They have been instrumental in working with our students and will be facilitating upcoming BSU Symposium in February. To celebrate African-American Black History Month, our schools and community can explore Black history, read books and stories, support Black-owned businesses, learn about Black leaders, watch films and documentaries, organize educational events and commit to Beyond February and celebrate Black history during other months as well. I wanted to share that on Monday, January 20th, the San Ramon Valley Diversity Coalition is hosting a Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Open Mic Celebration. This is going to be held at San Ramon City Hall Rotunda, starting at 2:00 PM, and it's open to all. The prompt this year is, "How has Dr. King's work and legacy influenced or impacted your community? Why is Dr. King's work and legacy still important in the 21st century?" So I hope to see you there. I'm also excited because I'm going to be bringing 50 African-American Black students to UC Berkeley coming up on February 6th on a field trip. And that's going to be a campus tour that we're going to have. And it is supported by the Black Recruitment and Retention Center. So I'm super thrilled to be able to do that. And so just wanted to remind everyone that February is African-American Black History Month. And I hope that, you know, it's going to be a month of celebration and we'll be able to do more than just February. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, National School Counseling Week, February 3rd through 7th. And that is our coordinator, Jessica Colson.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm here to speak to you about National School Counseling Week, which is always the first week of February. This year, it is February 3rd through 7th. This year's theme is "Helping Students Thrive." Since the 1980s, the American School Counseling Association has promoted the work of school counselors in order to highlight their essential contribution within US school systems and the tremendous impact that they have in helping students. On the next two slides, this one and the next one, lists the American School Counseling mindsets and I just want to highlight a couple of them. The mindset number one, that every student can learn and every student can succeed is really embodied in the work that our school counselors do. And the fourth one, every student should have access to a school counseling program. I think that the benefits of that have been shown to be incredibly successful over the last few years that we've had counselors at each level. And then mindset number five, effective school counseling is a collaborative process involving school counselors, students, families, teachers, administrators, other school staff and education stakeholders. I think a lot of the times, the work of school counselors is difficult to define and quantify because much of it is confidential and cannot be shared with others. Sometimes that can be borne out in reports and surveys and data. But I think that really where it comes to light is when students come back and talk about the positive impact that their school counselors have had on their development throughout their school. So those are some of the mindsets that I wanted to highlight from the mindsets from ASCA. This is a picture of the Cal High School Counseling Team. I believe many of them are here tonight. And in in a nutshell, and with so much more, school counselors do service academic needs of students, manage social and emotional needs of students and help support their post-secondary choices for college and career. And again, this is the logo and the theme for National School Counseling Week, School Counseling, Helping Students Thrive. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. And Career and Technical Education Month is February, and that presentation is from Doron Marcus.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone. I'm here to share with you the resolution for CTE Month. CTE Month is celebrated in February. This is the 41st year of its celebration. And the purpose of CTE Month is to raise awareness to our career technical education programs, share with you how awesome it is and also its role in preparing our students for college and career. We know, why would a student take a CTE course? Well, first of all, these are courses and pathways that are specifically designed to prepare students for the workforce. We know through research that students who complete CTE pathways are, 96% of them graduate high school and go on to college. They score higher on standardized tests. They have higher GPAs. And their progress in high school is generally viewed as better overall. It's because these students are engaged in meaningful and real-world work. CTE aligns with our strategic direction of deep learning and innovation by providing them with hands-on experiences, real-world experiences, industry-aligned experiences, and giving them this entrepreneurial mindset when they get out of high school and college. And students who complete CTE programs in high school and go on and do CTE programs in college typically make more money than students who are, who have a bachelor's degree and their student debt is less. So those are huge benefits to our, to CTE programs. I reached out to our teachers to share some pictures from this year and several of our teachers did. These are our students in our Child Development and Education Pathway. These, you can see, these are students that visit our elementary schools and work directly with our elementary students. At San Ramon Valley High School, Mr. Slannick shared these pictures. He's our auto tech teacher. He also teaches robotics. I mean, if you want to see CTE in action, you go visit his classroom. Truly, the kids love it and he's an incredible teacher and it's an amazing program. These are students who are learning childcare. What an incredible skill that is. In their family and consumer education course. And here are, you can see students working with the little ones in our developmental psychology course. So February, like I said, is CTE Month. And the resolution to support this month honors our commitment to preparing our students for high-wage and high-demand careers. And the CT pathways offered at our high schools, which are about 11. We have 11 pathways ranging from engineering to auto tech, to culinary arts, to iQuest and a bunch of wonderful programs. So in support of that month, I thank you.
Okay, and Words Matter Week, February 2nd through 8th. And that will be presented by Coordinator Deanna Sapiya.
Good evening, everybody. I'm happy to be here to speak for our final resolution of the night, Words Matter Week, which will be February 2nd through 8th. Words Matter Week would not be possible, oh, thank you, would not be possible without the wonderful support of our parent-teacher associations. Our PTAs really do help support our sites and the planning and the funding of wonderful activities that our students can enjoy and help bring awareness to the strength of our words. Words Matter Week was previously called No Name Calling Week. And it is an annual week of educational activities aimed at ending verbal hate and bullying of all kinds. During Words Matter Week, we strive to bring attention to name-calling, hate speech and verbal bullying of all kinds. We want to provide schools, students and parents with tools and inspiration to launch ongoing dialogue about ways to eliminate these acts in our communities and our schools. And of course, we want to ensure that SRVUSD is a safe place for all learners. Data shows that threatening words and taunting behavior regarding one's appearance, ethnicity, race, language, gender, size or special learning needs impacts a student's ability to learn and to perform scholastically and often leaves a child feeling unsafe. Words are powerful. They have the power to empower, motivate, excite, inspire, elate and give hope. Or they can sadden, frighten, anger, frustrate and isolate. Which would you prefer? Words Matter Week provides teachers, administrators and students to bring attention to the impact of the spoken word and to work as a community to end harassment, victimization, bullying, threatening words, taunting behavior, anxiety and depression and race-related graffiti. We may, we, activities like the wrinkled heart, which you see right on the screen, shows how, once a word is spoken, we can forget that those words are spoken, but we cannot remove the wrinkles that those words begin to put in our hearts. As small children, as adults, all of us are impacted the same. In addition to activities like the wrinkled heart activity, sites across the district can participate in the Kindness Challenge. Sites challenge their students and teachers to complete at least five acts of kindness during the week. These activities can be as simple as writing a kind note to a friend, playing with someone new on the playground or offering academic or emotional support to a friend in need. The Kindness Challenge helps change the climate at our sites and brings joy and smiles to those who participate. Many of our sites have fun with different themes during Words Matter Week. They can develop activities for the students to engage in each day during the week. Some activities such as Monday, wear bright colors because kindness shines. All the way down to a Friday, bring a kindness quote and share it at lunch with your peers. From painting rocks for a rock garden, kindness rock garden, to sharing positive words or drawings on the blacktop, our school communities will devote themselves to spending or spreading positive and affirming words throughout the week, learning lessons that will support this work throughout the year. So as we wrap up our resolutions and prepare to move into the rest of the board meeting, I encourage you to practice kindness, be the reason someone smiles and know that you always have a choice. Claire Pooley simply stated, "In a world where you can be anything, be kind." Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Okay, so we're at 10.3, Public Comment for Non-Agenda Items. This item is for non-agenda public comment. It's an opportunity for our community to speak on the record about items not on tonight's agenda. During the non-agenda public comment, the board cannot respond to comments because the topics have not been published on the agenda prior to the meeting. Are there any additional speaker cards for non-agendized public comment? At this time, we'll stop taking speaker cards for that item. Okay, so the first speaker is, I have a couple cards here that we need to clarify. If you're here about the budget, then it's on a different item. Carl Nishi, is this about the budget?
Yes.
Okay, that's okay. Ari Williams, is this about the budget cuts? Okay. And Jim Smithwick, this is about the budget? Okay, so first speaker will be Mike Arata, and after him will be Jim Smithwick.
I recommend that parents remove young children from the room here and at home if you're watching now.
Pornographic books from your high school libraries, ninety of them shown blurred in the sign, are now moving also into your middle school libraries. I mentioned an example of that middle school depravity when I responded to theatric shrieks of panic after I visited the SRV High School Library during banned books week. I'll now read from that middle school book, a fantasy smut selection that's available now in several of your middle school libraries. Quoting, "His tongue swept my mouth again, in time to the finger that he slipped inside of me. My hips undulated, demanding more, craving the fullness of him, as he added another finger. His palm pushed against the muddle of nerves at the apex of my thighs, and I groaned. Please, I begged, he palmed my breast, his thumb flicking over my nipple. I cried out, and he buried himself in me with a mighty stroke." This is middle school. "His hands made me groan as they scraped the top of my breast and circled around my peaked nipple. I loved these, he breathed, his hand sliding to my other breast. Rise, slid his finger along the band of my pants again, a cat playing with its dinner. Again, again, please, I managed to say. His hand at last trailed beneath my pants, he snarled in satisfaction at the wetness he found waiting for him, and his thumb circled that spot at the apex of my thighs, teasing, brushing up against it. His other hand gently squeezed my breast at the same moment, his thumb pushed down exactly where I wanted. More, more, more." This middle school library filth echoes the depraved high school pattern, i.e. ravenously licentious female characters in sexually submissive roles, eagerly servicing self-gratifying males. Recall that curriculum director Ms. Pettish has claimed, quote, "A careful selection process" for these library materials. And at a school board meeting nearly two years ago, Ms. Pettish called upon Doherty Valley librarian Allison Usine for attempted validation. Usine then herself claimed, quote, "Intensive training in collection development and selection," saying that "materials are chosen for their artistic, historic, and/or literary strengths, rather than rejected for their weaknesses. Our professional training equips us to consider criteria such as the reputation of the author, overall quality and accuracy, currency and age appropriateness of the content, and value to the collection," unquote. Those ridiculous shameless claims try to hide the fact that Board Policy 4219.24 is routinely violated here, and they show that your moral deficit is far worse than your misrepresented dollar deficit. So when kids here exhibit rude, crude, and lewd behavior, at home or otherwise, it may derive from the very materials and lessons in their schools. So when feasible, parents should remove their kids from SRVUSD and its galloping depravity. Shame on you.
Mr. Smithwick?
First of all, Helen, Helen, I want to send a nod to you. Whenever you spoke before this board, I felt bad because I overheard discussions in the dark hallways of the Ed Center from senior staff, which demeaned you when you were not present and whenever you chose to talk on a subject before the board. I remembered when they imposed the three-minute Helen limit on these discussions as a way to minimize the public's involvement in our school district's governance. We need you and more people like you, and the gentleman that just came by, in participating in these sessions. In the remaining three minutes, I want to address the parents and staff of the San Ramon Valley Unified School District. Because of our HR hiring processes, friends of senior staff have been placed in many positions, management and otherwise, across the district. One of the results of this nepotism is that we have directors who do not have an expertise in the field in which they've been hired. This has created many safety hazards around the district because of the lack of qualified supervision of outside vendors and the unilateral purchasing of hazardous equipment which is being placed in our classrooms. The AV team has repaired these faulty installations after getting authorization from our management chain when we run across them. We have tried to inform the IT management responsible for hiring the outside vendors about these problems, and were told that the outside vendors had finished the job and would not come back to repair the DSA violations in the installations. We also had threats of dismissal from senior management about informing people on these hazards. A quick summary of a few of these violations are the very heavy unsecured cameras, speakers, and poorer vendor AV installations. Most of these hazards are in drop ceilings over our students' heads. The problem is not during regular class time, but if an earthquake occurs, these twenty-to-forty-pound sharp weights can easily fall from the ceiling and critically injure our students. We also have expensive interactive boards that provide tripping hazards to the students. This was reported to me at a nonprofit event that an SRVUSD student was attending in which I was present. I do not have time to go into all the aspects, but in the last two years, the district has become a more hazardous place for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we're on to ten point four, Association Presidents' Report. Carrie Lucini, I know you're here. Did you want to speak tonight? Okay, Tammy Castelluccio, CSEA President.
Good evening. I'm Tammy Castelluccio, President of the California School Employees Association. I can honestly say that in the last, in my ten years as president and my almost eighteen years working in the district, I had never thought that we would be here speaking about this amount of budget reductions. The last few meetings, I've sat listening and understanding what we are facing. None of us are happy about the situation we find ourselves in. Staff are losing jobs. I have heard from the board, Servia, students, and community that we need to keep the cuts away from the classroom. When that is said, I only hear, "Keep it away from certificated staff." I was very disappointed and disheartened that at the December nineteenth meeting that not one of our board members asked any questions or made comments regarding any classified cuts, except maybe near the end of the meeting, even though a few of our classified employees came that night to speak. As you can see from the updated reduction plan based on the guidance from the board to Superintendent Kamik at the December nineteenth meeting and staff, that the only scenarios that have been presented for you is regarding certificated staff changes. That is the guidance you the board gave. I'm here to remind the board that we have almost thirteen hundred staff between SEIU and CSEA that work with and for our students every day. Let me remind the board during the pandemic that when we needed to bring our most vulnerable students back to the classroom, it was CSEA staff that returned to support those students with certificated staff on screen. I'm not here tonight to talk about what happened in the past and the inequities that the board has created between certificated and classified staff, although it was brought up at the December nineteenth meeting. I'm here tonight to share and discuss only how the board can be and do better moving forward. CSEA not only has concession negotiations ahead of us, but the normal layoffs we go through every year for parent ed fund positions. Since site budgets have been reduced by ten percent, we are prepared to receive more layoffs through this process to include positions that are primarily paid using site discretionary funds. When the board speaks about staff, what is said is teachers and staff. By separating the teachers from the rest of the staff, you are elevating the work they do as more important and the only ones that serve students. Don't get me wrong, I'm by no means being critical of certificated staff. I'm asking the board to change their words and actions to show classified employees that the jobs they do to support all of our students is just as important. I can honestly say that if there was one day that classified employees did not come to work, this district would cease to function. In the CSEA reduction plan, we could be losing a whole department, and that did not even raise a red flag with any of our board members. We all realize, depending on the board's decision this evening and how negotiations with all three bargaining units come to fruition, that our district as a whole will look very different from what everyone is used to. We are prepared to go to the negotiating table in collaboration and partnership with management as we always do. We are also ready to work together to make those tough decisions of how the district will look different in the future. Every aspect of the updated budget reduction plan affects the classroom, from the superintendent working five less days, increasing class size, to the ten custodial positions that could be eliminated. What classified employees, myself, and the SEIU president need from the board is to do better. Thank you.
Laura Finco, Servia, President.
Good evening. Before I begin and share any of my remarks this evening, I want to ask that we take just a moment for the victims of the SoCal fires. This devastation is numbing. I would also like to acknowledge that we are gathered on the unceded ancestral lands of the Alone people who have stewarded this land throughout generations. We honor their history, their culture, and their enduring connections to this region. My name is Laura Finco. I'm President of the San Ramon Valley Education Association, and I come to you this evening with the collective voice of the nearly seventeen hundred dedicated non-managerial, certificated educators who are the backbone of this district. I would like to share our congratulations on the student achievements which were honored here this evening. The time and talent these kids put into their sports is inspiring, and they deserve the support of a strong school system which allows a balance between academics and extracurricular. We understand that you face incredibly challenging decisions as you navigate the superintendent's budget reduction plan. We respect the gravity of this process and acknowledge the complex factors that must be weighed. However, we urge you to carefully consider the far-reaching impact and unintended consequences of these proposed reductions. I understand that there are proposed revisions. Unfortunately, it was not shared with us that there was an update. So there are a number of errors that will be presented this evening, including what must be negotiated. So look at that carefully. If we were given the heads-up about these possible revisions, we could have assisted with these errors. As such, the revisions do not reflect accurately the reality of each scenario. Regardless, the reduction plan is just that. It's a plan focused on cuts and not just for the short term, but they're slated as ongoing. First and foremost, we believe there needs to be a credible and proactive plan that increases revenue, not just rely on cuts. Simply trimming the budget without addressing the systemic need for sustainable funding will only lead us back to the same difficult position in the future. We owe it to our students, family, and staff to think beyond the immediate challenges and pursue creative solutions to generate revenue, whether through partnerships, grants, or advocating for increased state and local funding. Our members have already made hundreds of calls to Sacramento, and that's just the beginning. We also need to address the stark realities facing our special education programs. Certain light items in this budget have doubled, yet the resources and support for special education remain inadequate. This discrepancy places immense strain on our educators, students, and families. If we aim to attract and retain talented educators, we must ensure that special education programs are equipped with the resources they need to succeed. These programs are not just essential, they are a reflection of our commitment to equity and inclusion. The voices of our stakeholders, educators, parents, and students, have been clear. Any budget reduction must stay far away from the classroom, and that includes our paraprofessional brothers and sisters. Protecting class size, mental health programs, and supports our students rely on are our highest priority. These elements are foundational to the high-quality education our district is known for, and cutting them would be a step backward that we cannot afford to take. When we invest in appropriate class sizes, we invest in individualized attention and stronger relationships between students and educators. When we maintain mental health programs, we ensure that our students have the tools to succeed, not just academically, but emotionally. When we prioritize resources and supports, we foster an environment where every child has the opportunity to thrive. Tonight, I urge you to consider not just the numbers on the page, but the lives behind them. Every decision you make sends a message about the district's priorities and values. Let that message be one of our commitment to our students, to our educators, to the community we all serve. We are ready and willing to work collaboratively to find solutions that uphold the excellence of our schools while addressing the financial realities we face. Let us move forward with a shared vision, one that prioritizes innovation, equity, and the unwavering belief that every child deserves the best we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Ten point five, Student Board Member Report, Travis.
I'll begin with this. So yesterday, I had the privilege of meeting with our Student Senate, and we dived into an important conversation about our district's grading policy and also the ways that we are assessing learning in SRVUSD. Their insights definitely helped to shape our vision, to have more meaningful student-centered assessment and evaluation. I also got to contribute to the Grade Reform Committee's latest writing session, and we worked to craft the proposed board policies and administrative regulations that we are looking forward to presenting later this spring before the board. It's very exciting to see this work coming together. Lastly, I've been actively collaborating with our outstanding district staff on a variety of efforts, everything from strategies to boost our CASP engagement to exploring ways to enhance our nutritional services, ensuring that we can meet every need that our students have. So all in all, it's been great to see how much progress we're making across so many areas, and I'm definitely looking forward to seeing these efforts come to life in the weeks and months ahead.
Thank you, Travis. Ten point six, Superintendent's Report, CJ Kamik.
Thank you very much. We have not had very many school days since the last board workshop that we held prior to the winter break. I just want to welcome everybody back. There will be plenty of time for me to be speaking regarding the budget reduction, so I will carry on with a lengthy superintendent's report this evening. Welcome back, everybody.
Thank you. So now we're on to action items. Eleven point one, consideration of acceptance of the independent financial audit for the twenty-three twenty-four fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent of Business Services Danny Hellman.
Thank you, President Clark. Item eleven point one is in accordance with Education Code 41020. The district has contracted with Crowe LLP, an accountancy corporation licensed by the State Board of Accountancy, for an audit of all funds of the school district, including all component units. Tonight, we have a representative here from Crowe LLP. This is Jeff Jensen, who's a partner with the firm, and I'm going to turn it over to him to provide an oral report of the attachment to the board agenda, which is the full audit report from Crowe. So I will turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Again, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to present the audit report for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Seeing as how you have a lot on your agenda here tonight, I'll keep my comments brief, but I'll start by saying that this year's audit went very well. And so I'm happy to be able to present some of the highlights here for you. There are several different opinions that are part of your audit report. The first one is your financial statement opinion. And for the year ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the district received an unmodified opinion. That's the type of opinion you want on your audit report. Your audited financial statements comply with all applicable accounting pronouncements in our free and material statement. Also, looking at the internal controls of our financial reporting for this year's report, we actually did not have any findings related to internal controls or financial reporting. Next is over federal compliance. Because of the amount of federal dollars that the district expends, the district is required to have a federal audit done as well. And so for this year, you received an unmodified opinion regarding federal compliance. So no compliance findings for federal. And then the last section is on state compliance. You did have one immaterial state compliance finding this year, but outside of that, everything else was clean. And so the district received an unmodified opinion on state compliance. So as good as you can get there as far as having unmodified opinions for all three of those. I'd also like to just share with you that we didn't have any audit adjustments this year. So the numbers that were given to us to audit are the numbers that are coming back today with this report, with our opinion on it without modification. So again, more good news to share with you. You know, this was our first year working with the district, and we're happy to be on board and a partner working with you. Things were difficult out of the gate with your prior relationship and your prior report, but your team worked very hard and diligently through a lot of the matters that we had to get through as part of just even accepting you as a client of ours. And we're able to still complete the audit report on time. And we're able to still complete the audit report on time. So I think that there was a an extra effort that went into it this year by your staff to be able to kind of clear the report from last year and be able to get where we are here tonight and have favorable audit results for you. So. With that, I would just like to thank everyone that we dealt with throughout this year. You know, not only does our work work with fiscal services, but also with people throughout the district on compliance and site visits, and everybody was very helpful. Some of it was outside the normal timeframe of when you would expect an audit to happen because of just the timing of your prior audit. And so everything went very smoothly. And again, I think very good audit results for this year, and I'm happy to answer any questions if I could about, about our audit.
Estees, anybody have any questions? Thank you for being here tonight and for taking us on as a client. I know it was a little rocky at the beginning, but we really appreciate it. Thank you.
President Clark, if I may just add one more thing as, as we're wrapping this item up, I just would like to take the lead from, from Mr. Jensen and also extend my thanks to Executive Director Evan and the entire business department for their work on this. It was a difficult transition from the prior auditor to, to Crowe coming on board. They worked very diligently, very hard at everything that Mr. Jensen said, but I just want to extend my thanks to because it shows in the report. Thank you.
Thank you for adding that. Any, there's no public comment for this item. Okay. Okay, so may I have a motion to approve item eleven point one?
I'll improve the eleven point one, or I'll make a motion to approve eleven point one, consideration of acceptance of the independent audit.
I'll second that.
The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Van Zee. We'll call vote Student Board Member Hodges.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, so now we're at eleven point two, consideration of approval of proposed budget reduction plan, and I will turn that over to Superintendent Kammick.
Thank you very much, President Clark. There's a number of things to review this evening, and I thank everybody for their attendance and advocacy. If you haven't watched the December meeting where we had the workshop or read the original reduction plan, I would encourage you to do that, not because I want to put you through a process of reading the plan or watching the meeting, but tonight, we're going to be going through the revisions to the original plan that was presented to the board and not going as deep into the context of why we are where we are from a financial standpoint. And we'll spend a little bit of time talking about what we need to reduce. With that, I do thank Laura Finco for acknowledging that there were mistakes in the presentation, in particular on the Servia pages of the two options presented, because when staff was working to modify the items that were reduced, the column was not updated in terms of what is or is not negotiable. The district certainly knows its obligation to negotiate subjects that are required under the ERA to negotiate the decision or for our classified units to negotiate the effects of the decision. As was pointed out in other public comment from our CSCA president, the modifications presented this evening are specific to Servia positions, and that why that, that's why that page is the page is that affected. We held to the same format for the other recommendations. So in looking at the presentation, Logan, if you can do my best to read my mind of where we are, I appreciate it. A few things to call out in bold, the, the scope of reductions, we talked in the last meeting about twenty-four million dollars of reductions. That's been a target that we've shared publicly for a while. In the December meeting, I think Mr. Hellman, it was December, we presented our first interim budget report. In that first interim budget report, we make assumptions that we will be reducing expenditures by twenty-four million dollars. When added to our multi-year projections, that means that our reserve levels stay between three and just above four percent. That means in some years, the reserve that we have the capacity to spend is incredibly small, a couple hundred thousand dollars, right? Remember, in school budgeting context, we're required to have a three percent reserve by the state. That three percent reserve is, is not enough to run a month of payroll in most cases. It is not a rainy day fund. If a district ever utilizes that three percent reserve by the next interim budget report, it has to replace the money into that reserve account, which usually means the district has to take out a loan. And because our reserves are so thin moving forward, we talked in the last meeting about establishing a variance between the twenty-four million dollars of reductions and approving something a little bit higher. Because when we get through the entire process of negotiating, canceling contracts, making reductions, bumping in classified positions, the savings may not be exactly toward twenty-four million dollars. It may come under that. It could exceed that. The reason staff is recommending today that we authorize up to twenty-six million is because we need a variance that our reserves in the future years can absorb. If we move through this process and only reduce twenty-three million dollars out of the intended twenty-four, if that's the actual realized savings, we will have a negative budget next year. In, in addition, I think it's important to note that we wouldn't be intending to maintain a reduction of twenty-six million when we only need twenty-four. But as I'll cover later in the presentation, when we talk about the obligation to provide a notice to employees who may not have their job next year because of a reduction in force, we have to offer that notice by March fifteenth. And therefore, we need to move forward with that process. We won't, in my opinion, completely know if we've reached the twenty-four million dollar threshold until we start the next school year. As you'll recall, for this first interim, it captures your financial activity from July first through October thirtieth, thirty-first. And so that is really when we start to gain the picture. At that time, excuse me, we would come back to the board and say, we've reached twenty-four million. How would we like to handle the remaining money that is realized from the reduction program? The reason I describe that is because I want to help manage expectations and be transparent. It is not operationally feasible where we would approve twenty-six million dollars, much of which involves personnel and staffing. And then in May or June, say we've hit the twenty-four million dollar mark. We really start to crystallize our picture of where we come in with savings. When we finalize the, the staffing reductions, when we finalize the bumping process for classified, when we have retirements, resignations, and new hires. And then as we start the year, we start to see that. To the next page, please, Logan. Thank you. I also want to call out for transparency sake. If you looked at the original budget recommend, uh, reduction recommendation, the total presented was thirty point eight million dollars. In the revised documents this evening, you'll see that the, the total is thirty-one point two million dollars, and I want to highlight why that number increased. In continuing to work on our calculations, you'll recall in the first iteration, we had calculated a reduction to the Venture del Amigo program and staffing. And we estimated it to be about a hundred thousand dollars. We believe that's going to be closer to two hundred thousand dollars. That is one area where it increased due to going from one FTE to two FTE. Additionally, as we further calculated the potential FTE reduction for increasing high school class size, that estimate changed from sixteen to eighteen FTE. So those two adjustments from the original proposal are why the number has gotten larger. In context, as you, as you'll see from the options presented, of the thirty-one point two million dollars, there's approximately five point two million dollars that we could pull off the reduction list to reach our twenty-six million dollar threshold that staff is recommending. And we will review those options for the board and the community momentarily. I do want to highlight that both scenarios presented, the board has the authority to make adjustments to those scenarios or to create an alternative scenario not captured or presented here this evening. We have met all of the criteria for the Brown Act in terms of noticing the meeting, noticing the subject of the discussion, noticing that we're going to be potentially making a decision on budget reductions. So as we look towards this budget reduction, we, we touched on it, I think, in the last meeting. I want to call out a little bit of this information tonight. So when we submit our first interim budget report to the Contra Costa County Office of Ed, as is required under the law, the county always looks at the document and provides us a letter back. This is true for Contra Costa County, Alameda County. And in that letter, they establish for themselves and convey to us, do they approve the budget that we have presented? Or do they approve the budget report that we've presented? In terms of our first interim, we did get a letter back from the Contra Costa County Office of Education that acknowledges approval of our first interim budget with quote significant caution. And that is where the county can also issue directives to school districts from a financial perspective. The county office does not have many arms of authority over districts. LCAP, inter-district transfers, and budgets are really the three main areas. In our first interim letter from the county, they have given us a directive to implement a fiscal solvency plan to ensure long-term financial stability for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year and beyond. They have given us the directive that this will be demonstrated by, one, preparing a fiscal solvency plan, which a detailed report of our budget reductions by January thirty-first. Two is to act upon the list of reductions at the February twenty-fifth board meeting. I am asking that the staff does not wait until the February twenty-fifth board meeting. Staff is requesting that the board consider taking action on this item tonight. That's the timeline that we have prepared. If the board is unable to take action tonight, we have already looked at a potential special meeting for January twenty-second. The reason we need to do this quickly is because we have negotiations that need to be engaged in, and we need to know the, the scope of the reduction before we can do that with authenticity with our labor partners. Additionally, it is going to be a remarkable task for our HR team on the certificated and the classified side to handle and prepare what we call the PKS, the Particular Kind of Service Reduction. And that has to come forward for the board's action so that layoff notices can be issued by the statutory timeline of March fifteenth. So while the county asks us to do this by February twenty-fifth, I would say frankly, that's too late for us. They have asked us to adjust the MYP that is presented and approved at the February twenty-fifth meeting, adopt the resolution which I just mentioned, the PKS resolution, that we serve our layoff notices as required by law by March fifteenth. The final layoff notice is, while most people consider March fifteenth the layoff date, that's when the initial notice has to be provided to employees. A final notice has to be provided by May fifteenth. That is the time period in which a district could rescind those notices if they weren't needed. And then we have to submit with our June budget, our revised budget. I do think that pending the board's action on this budget reduction plan, we can meet the directives provided by the county. So as a reference for those who were maybe watching, were not watching, in the slide deck attached to this agenda item, you'll see the original proposed reductions that were presented to the board in the December workshop. And we heard feedback from the board. Staff went back and worked on two potential scenarios to address the requests of the board. Logan, I'm going to go to the face sheet for scenario one, please. Thank you so much, Logan. In scenario one, we took the board's feedback to do everything we could from a budgetary standpoint to preserve mental health services and counseling. So a few key points from this, in doing this, we're recommending that the, this scenario recommends that the elementary counselors at eleven point O FTE stay in place for one more year. The reason I the reason I acknowledge that that recommendation is for one more year is because those positions have been and continue to be funded by one-time grant dollars which will expire. The second key point is maintaining the existing counselor ratio for middle school and high school at the current levels, which retains seven point two FTE of counseling services. This also keeps eight point two FTE of our student support counselors, four point O at middle school, and four point two at high school. And it retains all of our current social worker FTE. So in summary, that option creates a, a budget reduction plan of twenty-six point six million dollars, which is about six hundred and seventy-three thousand above the required, requested twenty-six million that I think we need to address for variance. I, I understand and appreciate the advocacy that I'm hearing. And, and I do want to honor that, and I know we will have a lot of sincere and heartfelt public comment. I want to acknowledge a difficulty, not just with this scenario, but with budget reductions that we are facing currently. I think as educators, when we look at change, whether I was a fifth grade teacher, whether I was a kindergarten teacher, an elementary principal, a director of special ed, anytime we looked at change in, in my realm, I looked at if I'm asked to do something different or asking someone else to do something different, I should very clearly rationalize the benefit that comes from that. And that's just not present in these budget reductions. And I think we have to acknowledge that upfront because it is counterintuitive to the work that I think we naturally do as individuals who serve and who work in education. So when we look at these budget reductions, I can speak for myself. I said in the last meeting, the, these are heavy on my heart. I don't take lightly these recommendations, and I do not defend these as these will be good for kids. I do not defend these as these will be good for staff or the district as a whole or the community. But with ten million dollars reduced last year, three and a half million dollars reduced in the current year, and the need to get across the threshold of twenty-four, that will be thirty-seven and a half million dollars that we have had to cut from San Ramon Valley Unified School District in less than twelve months. We are at a point where we need to make decisions, and I regret ever saying this as an educator, that are not going to be good for kids. And I think the advocacy is so important because I don't want to be elected to Sacramento, and I don't envy anybody who is. And I don't mean to be spiteful when I say this remark. But I don't think Sacramento cares very much when we have to do this locally. Because there's a thousand school districts across the state, and the, the, the hurt that this will cause our people, adults and children and the community at large, is not felt in Sacramento. They are in many ways protected from the hurt that comes from this. And I think that's why we have to advocate so much for increased state and federal funding. Because when we have declining enrollment, expiring COVID dollars, we are in the bottom fourth percentile of all districts in the state of California for revenue under the LCFF formula. That is a recipe to land us where we are today. And I think we need to continue to advocate because I do appreciate how much advocacy is in the room, how many emails I have received in the past month. I think as of coming into this meeting, I think I've responded to each of them. But I want to just underscore, and I apologize for being long-winded about this. We as educators look for the connection to why is this the decision? It's usually good for kids. That is not included in this reduction plan, and I apologize. But to get thirty-seven and a half million dollars of cuts accomplished in less than twelve months, there will be negative outcomes, and I wish I could describe it differently, but that would not be honest. So in scenario one, it does protect the, the counseling services. You can go to the last page of this section, Logan, which highlights the percentage breakdown, if you would please. When we presented the original budget reduction plan, we highlighted the scope of the, the summary of the reductions. So on this plan, you can see that the, the total is calculated based on the twenty-six point six million. And we highlighted a percentage of our current year personnel costs, meaning personnel usually represents eighty-five to eighty-eight percent of every school district's budget. And when you isolate those personnel costs into employee groups, in our case, Servia represents about sixty-seven point five percent of our personnel expenditures. In this scenario, the reductions for Servia that are proposed represent fifty-three point eight percent of the reduction plan. So that's about thirteen point six, point seven percent lower than the percentage of the personnel costs. For CSCA, their representative portion of this budget reduction plan is about seven point six below their current percentage of personnel costs. For SEIU, it is about three percent below their percentage of current personnel costs. In this scenario, management is ten point seven percent of the reduction plan, which is two percent above their personnel costs for the district. Their personnel costs for the district. It is the only group that is above their percentage. And then you'll see that program and budget adjustments make up seventeen point three percent of the reduction. And so I think there are some highlights and and reasons to clap, and I appreciate the individuals in the audience doing that. I think we also have to acknowledge what this plan leaves out. And that means that our class sizes in the proposal would remain. Increased across the board. And this is the pain point of budget reductions. And that is to say, if we are saving something, we are likely. Sacrificing something else on the list, and I appreciate the comments we've received tonight about revenue. I have some points to talk about on that in a moment. Turning to scenario two, if you wouldn't mind, please, Logan. This is taking a little bit. Of the the request to retain mental health services and counseling support. And joining that with the board request for how do we look at class size? There was a discussion point in particular about K through three. The reason I'm leaving TK out is because that has some statutory requirements from the state. But looking at K through three versus four, five. And so I want to just talk over some of the highlights for scenario two. In this scenario, we would be increasing, recommending an increase in class size. By two at grades four and five. Which means that kindergarten through third grade classes would remain status quo. And again, changes in class size are negotiable. And I want to highlight again, we talked about this in the first meeting. When we say it's a one-time. Reduction, we're talking about. One time each year for the three-year budget cycle is conceptually what we're talking about. Again, all of that needs to be negotiated, but. I want to call out that that is. One time during the life of that three-year budget cycle. And. K through three stays the same, four, five goes up. That saves twenty-two FTE from losing their position. Increasing middle school by ratio by one. That saves four point six FTE. It maintains the original recommendation to increase the high school ratio by two. In the social worker section. It retains five FTE instead of four as originally presented, so maintains one more FTE. And I do want to call out, it does highlight that it's one FTE for a sixty-six homeless and foster youth. I acknowledge and don't want to misconstrue that that is, that is not the only scope of their work. But one of the primary questions and area of concern that came up was how our social workers are serving our homeless and foster youth. I also want to acknowledge that is a data point that's represented on the dashboard. And it is oftentimes under-reported. So I just want to put that caveat out there that there might be students who are homeless. That are not captured on the dashboard in the data system that. Are part of a very fluid world that we live in, and that changes all the time. In the student support counseling section, this would retain the four point two FTE of the eight point two that's proposed for reduction. Maintaining the student support counselors for our comprehensive high schools. And in the counselor reduction general for middle school and high school. Retaining three point two of the proposed seven point two that were reduced. In your original recommendation, you, you might, in my original recommendation, you recall seeing adjusting that ratio. It's not a clean adjustment on the ratio, but we think we can work with our labor partners to find a solution to. Instead of reaching seven point two, reach three point two to maintain some more, some more counseling support. So in total, scenario two. Gives you a budget reduction of just over twenty-six million dollars. There's about thirty-one. Thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars that is above the threshold. The other pieces that I would highlight. Is i- in case it's of importance to the board or anybody else who might be considering. When you look at the two options. Option two, I believe saves roughly thirty-three FTE. From being reduced. Option one, I think is about thirty-one and a half. I would put an asterisk by that for transparency. Because eleven and a half of that FTE is our elementary counseling group. Which would have those one-time dollars going away in the, in the very near future. So in terms of an ongoing savings of FTE. Let me rephrase that, because ongoing savings is a budget cut term. In terms of protecting staff. Option two is going to protect, I think, thirty-three FTE in a longer-term capacity. Option one. I think closer to twenty-one FTE in the long-term capacity, short-term thirty-one and a half, but. Recognizing that that's one-time funding for our elementary counselors. I want to call out as as we move past these two modified recommended, actually, my apologies, I'm moving too quickly. Logan, if you could go to the summary sheet for this real quickly, I think I've already highlighted the construct of the percentages. In this case. The percentage represented in the reduction plan for survey is fifty-two point seven percent of the plan. That's just about fourteen point eight percent below their current percentage. And for CSEA, it's twelve point three, which is about seven point three below. SEIU, six point five, which is about two point eight below. And management in this case is almost at eleven percent, two point nine percent above. Their current percentage of the personnel costs. A few more points before I close and and turn it back to the board. I think I've already covered the fact of. Why we would consider authorizing twenty-six million when twenty-four million gets us to the finish line. And I just want to underscore that one more time. I wish the laws weren't written in the way they were when notices have to be given on March fifteenth and our budgets adopted in June. But that's the ed code. And we have to make sure that if, that we provide those notices, because if we miss that deadline, we cannot reduce staff until the next year. And and that is why we're, we're recommending to the board a twenty-six million dollar. Approval. I've already talked about the fact that we, we have an obligation legally and morally. To make sure that we're at the bargaining table to review the aspects of these areas that are required to be negotiated under the law. I appreciate the communication that I've had with the leaders of each labor unit. I think that they have acknowledged the difficult predicament that we're in. And I acknowledge. That we have different vantage points and priorities for what we are trying to do. I think as President Clark said. We are all trying to do our very best for our students. It hurts my heart as a lifetime educator to ever make a recommendation that I can't endorse as good for kids. But from a business and operations standpoint. I want to make sure that we retain the ability to make our financial decisions locally. And we stay in control of our fiscal picture. And in order to do that, we need to have a positive budget certification, and we need to make reductions. In the scope of looking at revenue enhancement. ADA is a critical part of how we earn our revenue, because I, that's the model from the state. I have many disagreements with that model, but I don't have the unilateral power to change it. Our ADA through December, I believe is at about ninety-six point five percent. Which is good. It's up a little bit from where we were. But we also know from historic trends, that's, that's the first section, P two is the second section. We know from historic trends, we drop about a half or a whole percent in P two. In large part, because where do we see a lot of illness and long-term absences through the winter season? So hopefully our ADA stays a little bit higher. I want to caution, as I did in the first meeting, I don't think we should over-assume. Our revenue based on assuming an increase in ADA. Think we need to let that pattern establish itself. Because if we assume in our budget adoption. A higher ADA than we can actually realize, we are setting ourselves up for a financial cliff that we cannot afford to absorb. If we had a seven percent reserve. We might, as staff, say. We can, we can raise that assumption by one percent and go chase that goal. With the razor-thin margins in the reserve that we have right now. I don't believe I can recommend to you that we chase an ADA goal, because if we fall any bit short, we'll be negative. The other piece on the revenue standpoint that I talked about in the first meeting is. Getting across this, this threshold, which is not the end of the journey. But getting through this point of the budget reduction process and turning our attention to. What do we do next to redefine our future? How do we look at things like, will an extended-day kindergarten program increase the retention of our students and our enrollment? How do we study that further and see if that's a possibility here? And I acknowledge that adjustment would have to be negotiated. But I can say, coming from Fremont Unified, where I was superintendent. We were in declining enrollment. We moved to an extended-day kindergarten program and almost flattened out our enrollment within a year. How do we leverage properties like the district office? Because. To cover it for anybody who missed the first meeting. If you sell a property. That money is legally restricted to go into capital improvements, into Fund Forty. So if we were to sell a property in the district, pick a number, let's say it's for fifteen million dollars. That doesn't get to go into our operational budget. It has to go into facility improvements. It's restricted. So in other districts where I've served as superintendent, we've gotten creative with leasing property. Because that money can go into the general fund, into the operational costs. Might not be something that, that is always thought of in schools, but. In Martinez Unified, we leased a small portion of land that we owned to Wendy's for thirty years. And we got money every single month on that lease. And Wendy's got money every single time somebody bought a Frosty. And so I think we need to get very creative with what we do with our property resources, in particular. This property here, how do we explore what we can do next? Another piece is looking at zero-based budgeting. We can't be in the bottom fourth percentile of the state in LCFF funding. And continue to try and recruit and retain the talented staff that we have and want to serve our students. We have to find a way to redefine what is the core of the district, what can we deliver on year over year? Without being in the process of making continual reductions. Additionally, we're looking at other models. I will not get the acronym right, and perhaps Danny will be able to. To roll it off, but the state changed the regulations where. If you've got it, go ahead, please, sir.
CYBHI.
Which stands for?
Oh, I don't know that part. Just know the acronym.
It's the, I think it's the California Youth Behavioral, something, and then something. In short. The regulations changed where in previous years, school districts could bill Medi-Cal for a certain population of students and receive reimbursement. That has changed dramatically. Free Fremont Unified, where I was serving as superintendent, put in to be in cohort one. We didn't qualify. We landed in cohort two. That's the same cohort that San Ramon was in before I got hired. We're in cohort two. We are engaged in working on try and, trying to bring revenue to the district for things that we're already doing. This spring, we accept, we expect to receive somewhere around six hundred thousand dollars of a planning grant. For being part of cohort two, to launch a program that allows us to submit billing for some of the things that we're doing. That is a way where we can try and see what we do differently with what could be some substantive revenue. To support and or retain programs. The challenge is being in cohort two, while we may get the grant money this spring. That won't materialize as revenue by fall. We need to build and launch, and that's going to take a little bit more time. But I do appreciate the comments that were shared on the fact that we have to focus on revenue. Think there's a lot of good ideas we can look at for focusing on revenue. My cautionary tale there, and I don't mean to be this negative in general. Is we can't build our budget on assuming increased revenue. Or we could be in big trouble. We do not have the reserves to assume any increased revenue above what we actually know will be coming. I think we have to work tirelessly on increasing revenue. Establish a bona fide fact that this is now revenue, and then start changing our budget assumptions. But I don't think we can do that too quickly. With that. And with a heavy heart and acknowledgement that. These are very painful recommendations. These are the two scenarios presented to the board this evening for discussion and review, and I'll turn it back to you, President Clark. Thank you.
Thank you. So would you like to do questions right now, or do you want to hear public comment first? You have any preference? Okay, well, let's do the public comments so that we can hear what people have to say. Okay, so I'll call up your name and then the next person's name who will be behind you. First, uh. First one up is Ari Williams. And after her will be Carl Nishi.
Hey, my name is Ari Williams. My name is Keisha Malabi. I am a senior, we're both seniors from Cal-Hi, and we are speaking to the board on behalf of many concerned high school students. We would first like to point out how cuts, cuts to teachers' counselors would be. As you all know, would be incredibly harmful for it, I mean, for students of this district. For example, if cuts, any cuts to counselors. In the position or numbers, or. Will have severe damaging effects on the students as they ensure the mental health and are in position. Sure, the mental of the students are in position where they can survive. So, and so deeply personal issue as they have greatly benefited me and many of my friends and why many of us are still here. Next, proposed cuts to teachers' salaries. Which would have a wide, again, a wide impact on this. Cutting teacher positions. With increased costume sizes, which has drastic impacts. On a student's ability to learn and the teacher's ability to teach, as we all know. Cutting teachers by reducing the calendar year. Or having them to work more for the same pay would also negatively impact the teaching quality. That we would expect from the teachers and also would be unfair to. Fair to them. And this should be treated as a more of a last resort, including all staff budget cuts. I'm also deeply concerned how a lot of the board took this budget shortfall, especially when it was a lot smaller. To propose severe cuts instead of looking into how we can increase funding. Such as raising attendance, which I do know this, the district is trying to do. But we could also do things like, things like independent study contracts. And putting them to get a bit more money off of our attendance. Lastly, I want everybody here in the audience or in the board to keep writing to Sacramento to hopefully. Change how this is funded, since we are. We should not have to deal with this. This is. The state funding is nowhere near what should be for this district. Thank you.
We have quite a few cards here, and if you have, some of you are speaking on the same subject. If you could either come up together or consolidate your answers. We want to hear from everybody. We want to hear what everybody has to say, but. We have quite a number here, and I think a lot of them are on similar subjects. So Carl, after Carl is Robyn Blackburn.
You know, the employees of San Ramon Unified would like to thank you for. All of the time that you've put into working out this situation. We know, we understand that. A sound fiscal budget, a sound fiscal policy and. And budget are key to the survival of the district. Going forward, I am hoping that. The district will focus on the needs of the children. And also, keep in mind that. That we're in, we're in a different day and age. You know, if you look around this room. You look at all of the adults in here, and our own parents. Didn't have to worry as much of the parents of our students that their. Children would make it through four years. And still be alive. And not. Die from a drug overdose or. Die by suicide because life is so complex. And especially. Be influenced by, by strangers across the continent and beyond who have. Direct, direct impact and contact with them via cell phones and and social media. It's a very complex world. And these students need our support. And they need the team. They need an entire network of. Concerned individuals to help them get through. Their high school careers, you know, all, I mean, K through twelve. Get through education intact. And I just want to, you know, I don't, I don't have any. Novel ideas regarding the budget. But I do hope that. we appreciate the fact that, um, going forward. Going forward, if we dismantle the, the team that we have assembled so far, and I am speaking of my, my colleagues, Dia Mundel and Michelle Dooner have spent the better part of a decade building up the social work program with Dave Kravitz, and it's a wonderful program that it serves, serves so many children. If we lose that, we're basically losing a culture of support. And it's not easy to rebuild a culture of support. So that is what I ask the, the board and CJ.
Thank you. After Robyn is Monica Witt.
Good evening. My name is Robyn Blackburn. I'm a counselor at San Ramon Valley High School. And prior to that, I was a counselor at Doherty Valley High School. And I can say that having worked at two different secondary sites in the district, they are very different, but they do share a commonality, and that is the need for mental health support. I'm offering my perspective on this because I'm both a counselor and a dedicated parent in this district. And knowing that these cuts could potentially happen scares me to my core for what lies ahead for my own child. Many people don't know how big of a role school counselors play in their child's adolescent lives. And the reason for that is most of it is confidential. We can't share. Counselors often serve as a first point of contact for students. No two days are alike in our offices. One minute, it's a student in tears over a grade they received on a test, and they're contemplating dropping a class because they'll never get into college with a B plus on their transcript. The next minute, it may be a student who was sent to me because they can't stay awake in class, but little do they know, or little does their teacher know that that student was up all night listening to their parents fight through a divorce. The next, it's a student in the locker room before P E who was photographed by a mean girl, and those photos were shared in that public Snapchat story. All of these situations have happened in the last six months to me personally as a counselor. And that's just one of hundreds of these instances that we deal with. This is an excerpt from an email that I received a few years ago from a student who recently graduated. She said, while attending Doherty Valley High School, I lacked resources and struggled with my home life. The issues I had going on at home with my family were serious. You had to make multiple calls to CFS and the police to keep me safe. You made sure I had food to eat, made it to soccer practice, checked on my homework and classes, and ensured that I was mentally and physically safe every day. These are the students that change our lives, and these are the students that we lose sleep over, wondering if they're safe at home. And these are the students whose grades and attendance we track daily to make sure that they're passing their classes and keeping their heads above water. These are the students who come into our offices every single day, and quite frankly, they and thousands of others will be lost without this existing support. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. After Monica is Tassine Khan.
Good evening. Superintendent Kamik, President Clark, trustees, and members of the community. My name is Monica Witty. I've lived here for more than thirty years. My two sons attended school in this district, and I'm passionate about the importance of good public education for all students. Tonight, I'm here representing the Danville-Alamo Walnut Creek Branch of A U W. We attend most school board meetings, and you've probably come to know us. But just in case, I'll introduce us again. Our branch includes about two hundred people and is part of a national organization whose mission is to advance gender equity through research, education, and advocacy. Our vision is equity for all. A U W is filled with educators, retired teachers, librarians, along with scientists, engineers, lawyers, health professionals, and many others. We, and I believe everyone in this room this evening, are here because we care deeply about the importance of public education. About two years ago, we were introduced to the Strategic Directions Pyramid that's framed on the wall behind President Clark. The pyramid shows that the district recognizes that equity and social emotional well-being are crucial, foundational conditions that support learning. A U W fundamentally promotes equity for all. We are in alignment with the model depicted in the pyramid. We believe that academic excellence can only be achieved when all students feel secure, safe, and respected. I want to thank Superintendent Kamik and everyone involved for putting in the hard work to develop the Budget Reduction Plan. The revised reduction plan dated January fourteenth today is encouraging in its support for mental wellness. Both scenarios, one and two, included in the plan would restore some of the cuts to counseling, student support, and social workers that were outlined in the initial plan presented on December nineteenth. We understand that the district is facing a very difficult challenge. We urge you to support a budget where social emotional well-being and equity for all are prioritized, as they appear to be, on the Strategic Directions Pyramid framed on the wall behind President Clark.
Thank you. After Tassine is Alisa Gosh.
Good evening. My name is Tassine Khan. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and I serve as a district feeder pattern social worker for the Doherty Valley High School feeder pattern. My job is to provide basically counseling for students, case management for homeless foster students. I provide truancy support, including home visits, and social service supports to fam, our low-income families and those experiencing challenges. And we have, most people don't know this, but there are quite a few along the Bullinger Canyon with the eight affordable housing apartment complexes. In addition to that, I serve on the District Suicide Prevention Committee and as club advisor to two of Doherty's clubs, including the NAMI Club at Doherty. Today, I want to talk about mental health, specifically because for the demographic that I serve, the stigma is real. While families may have access to health insurance, that does not necessarily mean the students have access to mental health support. I want to talk about one specific interaction that I had with a student. The student was a sophomore. They came to me after two suicide attempts. They shared that when they were in the ER, their parent came up to them and said, please knock this attention-seeking behavior, and let's just go home. When the student said to the parent that they were still in emotional pain, they were told to shut up, completely disregarding how they were feeling. On one of our weekly sessions, the student asked me a simple question. Why? I didn't really understand the question. I was like, why? Why should you live? Well, you know, life's beautiful, and we're going to get through this together. And the student just repeated the question, no, no, why? I didn't understand, so I was like, why what? And the student said, why do you care? Why do you care when even my parents don't care? I reassured the student that I do care, as all of our mental health professionals do. And I reassured the student that I would be with them all the way until graduation, and I was for several years later. I want to end with a famous education quote by Barbara, I think, Colerose. And it goes something like, if our students or if our kids come from healthy, functioning families, it makes your jobs easier as educators. But if they do not come from healthy, functioning families, it makes your job important. As you guys think about budget cuts and revisions, I, I urge you to not undermine the importance that even one supportive adult makes in the life of a struggling child. Thank you so much.
Thank you. After Alisa is Elaine De Souce.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. As a wellness center coordinator and social worker, I see firsthand how social workers transform the lives of students who are struggling emotionally, socially, and academically. Our work is not a luxury, it's essential. Students today face immense pressures, academic expectations, social comparisons, family dynamics, and more. Every day, I meet students overwhelmed by anxiety, burnout, and isolation. I've sat with students who feel like life isn't worth living, who believe their struggles are invisible or insurmountable. Social workers provide the safety and trust they need to open up, and from there, we guide them toward hope. Beyond crisis moments, we identify silent struggles, students disengaging, suffering humiliation due to learning challenges, or feeling rejected for their identity. We address these challenges systemically and personally, ensuring students are not just supported but also empowered with skills to navigate life's difficulties. This work doesn't just impact individual students, it strengthens the entire school community. Social workers collaborate with teachers, administrators, counselors, families to create inclusive, respectful environments where every student feels seen and valued. Without social workers, these critical gaps in care and advocacy would widen, leaving students unsupported in ways that direct, directly impact their learning and well-being. By keeping social workers in schools, you're not just investing in support, you're saving lives and building futures. Thank you.
Thank you. After Elaine is Corinne Nowak.
Good evening, esteemed members of the school board and SRVUSD community. My name is Elaine De Sou, and I'm the elementary school counselor at Twin Creeks Elementary School and Bullinger Canyon. I'm here tonight on behalf of our elementary school counselors advocating for the social, emotional, and mental well-being of our students. While we understand the financial challenges we face, we urge you to consider the long-term impact of cutting any SRVVA member, including our elementary school counselors, on our most vulnerable population, our young students. We're often asked, what do you guys do? Tonight, we share that we are trusted adults guiding children through an increasingly complex world. At the elementary level, the need for crisis intervention and mental health support is growing. One in five children faces a mental health disorder annually, and that manifests as anxiety, depression, bullying, or even suicidal thoughts. If not addressed early, we know that these issues can lead to lifelong challenges. We are on the front lines. We, after looking at our data, complete an average of seven hundred forty individual meetings with our students, over seventy group sessions, and thirty classroom presentations each year. Without our intervention, these issues may escalate into even more severe challenges. In addition to crisis intervention, we deliver SEL programs that teach children how to manage emotions, resolve conflicts, and build positive relationships. Through our classroom SEL presentations and curricula, nearly all twelve thousand elementary students receive lessons on these crucial topics. These skills are as vital as academics in helping students navigate today's pressures. We collaborate closely with teachers to ensure interventions that are timely and effective, preventing added stress and burnout on our staff. Equally important is our work with families, guiding them through difficult situations, offering coping strategies, and connecting them with external resources. The impact of our work is very clear. Research shows that. And in our district, early intervention and SEL programs help students build resilience, improve behavior, and excel academically. All of this is at risk if we are cut. There are alternative ways to address the budget crisis without cutting us. I urge you to explore them. Our work is making a real difference. In closing, this is an investment of our students' futures. By providing social emotional support, crisis intervention, and a safe space to heal, we equip them with the tools that they're going to succeed, not just in school, but in life. Many of us have had suicidal risk assessments done, and that's just one.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I have to.
It's okay, but I really do hope you do consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
After Corinne is Jessica Gorall.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Kamik, and community members. My name is Corinne Nowak. I'm the Support Counselor at California High School. And I am actually going to be reading a letter that was given to the Support Counselor at Doherty Valley High School. Tatum Villa was not able to be here this evening as she's homesick, but she wanted me to share a student's perspective. This was a card that was given to her by a student that she's been working with for the past three and a half years and is soon to graduate. It says, Merry Christmas, Ms. Villa. Thank you so much for being my support system over these past few years and for continuing to be there for me heading into the new year. You have always been there to lift me up when I was down and stayed with me during my lowest of lows. When I had no one else to turn to, there you were. I felt rejected by my family, by my peers, and worst of all, by myself. You told me to love me for me, and I'm not sure where I would be without you. Therapy has frightened me for a long time because of all the trauma I've faced, but it never felt like therapy when I was with you. You made me feel like I was your friend right off the bat at a time when I needed friends the most. There is no way for me to repay you for all you've done for me, but I still wanted to show you my appreciation somehow. I wish you a happy holiday, your student. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jessica is Connie Iglesias.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jessica Gorall. I'm the Support Counselor at Mona Vista High School. As we know, our counselors and social workers are crucial to the safety, the success, and the overall well-being of our students. In our district, we have four support counselors at the high school level, one at each of our comprehensive sites. We serve students by providing direct mental health supports to any students who need social emotional services. We also constantly collaborate with our teachers, counselors, social workers, school psychologists, administrative teams, school nurse, and SRO to make sure that all of our students are well taken care of. We work with students in both the general education population and the special education population. We serve students who do and do not have five oh fours and IEP plans, so formalized educational plans. And we also serve students regardless of any outside supports they may or may not be receiving. So essentially, we serve anyone who needs support. Reducing our mental health providers and restricting access to services will not only negatively impact the well-being of our students, but it's also a huge safety risk. Over the past seven years during my time as the Support Counselor at Mona Vista, I've completed numerous safety plans, risk assessments, CPS reports, and many of those risk assessments have led to student hospitalizations. Many students on my caseload are highly suicidal. They're battling a variety of mental health challenges and desperately need mental health services. Providing tier-three mental health services to our most vulnerable students takes time and requires bandwidth. Eliminating support counselors and social workers will completely inundate our alphabet counselors and our wellness centers who are not equipped or designed to take on the high volume and high intensity of our tier-three work. Eliminating counselors and social workers will truly be at the detriment of our students. I understand that these financial cuts have to happen somewhere, somehow, but I urge you to avoid cutting services providing mental health to our most vulnerable students. Thank you.
Thank you. After Connie is Kelly Falcone.
Hello, thank you all for having me here. I am Connie Iglesias, and I am a Support Counselor at San Ramon Valley High School. I have a small alphabet at San Ramon Valley High School, so I'm a little bit different than other support counselors. I take, do both jobs to a degree. But for context of what the majority of my job is, I'm going to share with you a personal letter that was written to me by a student who graduated last year to help convey the importance of what support counselors are and what we do. Dear Mrs. Iglesias, when I can't say everything I want to say and the words get caught in my throat, I write it down. I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you for helping me through high school. Thank you for supporting me through the ups and downs of my mental health. Thank you for loving and supporting me when I felt so alone. You are a big part of the reason why I'm still here today on this earth. And without you, I don't think I'd still be here, so thank you. I want you to know that I'll never forget the support you've given me, and I will in fact be telling my future. and I will in fact be telling my future kids about you. And I don't really know much about you or your story, but I hope you have felt the same amount of love as you've given to me and all the other students at this school. I know, I know you have only, not only helped me and changed my life, but many other kids at this school. Thank you for being the only light at this school. Thank you for believing in me when I didn't believe in myself. Words cannot describe how greatly I appreciate you. So when I walk that stage, I will be thinking about you. I will be looking for you in the sea of people, and I will be reminded that I would have never gotten to this point in my life if it wasn't for you. And when I lock my eyes onto you, I hope you can see the gratitude in my eyes. Thank you so much, Mrs. Iglesias. There will always be so much love in my heart for you. And I would like to just swap out my name, Mrs. Iglesias, and put Support Counselors, Support Staff, it's not just me, but the work that we do directly affects students and the classroom and numbers. Success, success stories for academics and athletes, like the wonderful things we got to see today. It's easy to talk about those on a high school campus or to hear about those. Those are the types of things I was involved in, I'm a college athlete myself. But this letter really speaks to all students matter and all students' lives are important and deserve to have the time, respect, and ability to work with someone who will see them and walk them through the stages of this very intense season, this generation, and for the place we are in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After Kelly is Kathleen Norgard.
Good evening, Board Trustees and the Superintendent. My name is Kelly Falcone and I'm proud to be a counselor at Cal High, and I'm very encouraged by the revisions that have been proposed to increase mental health support. Tonight, I'm inviting you to come to Cal High. On any given day, if you were to walk into our counseling office, you might see students looking for resources to support them in their classes, advice for navigating situations with their peers or teachers or families, seeking answers to questions about their credits or feedback on their resumes or college essays. I literally tell our freshmen when we meet them that we are the junk drawer of the school. Come to us and we'll figure out where to go next. You would see notes scribbled on our doors telling the onlooker that we're in an IEP or 504 meeting or on the phone with a caregiver. It might say that we're up in the main building giving classroom presentations ranging from mental health to four-year planning or in the conference room meeting with administrators or teachers to collaborate on micro-issues like supporting that one particular student to macro-issues like improving campus culture. What you will not see is what happens behind a hastily shut door when tissues are being used as students tell us things followed by the phrase, "You are the only person I've told this to." I consider it a blessing that some students can tell you that they see their counselor a few times a year during classroom presentations or course selection or dropping in for a quick question. But for the students who struggle with mental health or who have challenges in their home lives as they navigate situations while outside of their control, the confidential, behind closed doors work is vital. This can be said for the seemingly ever-rising number of students who end up in our offices in tears under the strain of academic pressure in our community, needing reassurance that it's okay and normal not to know what they want to do with their lives. All this is to say, as counselors, we wear many different hats, often in rapid succession. While the American School Counselor Association recommends a caseload of two hundred and fifty to one, we are currently making do at four hundred. Our fabulous Support Counselors and Social Workers are making it possible for us to stay above water and ensure that our most vulnerable students have an additional trusted adult on our campuses. The needs of our students would only be exacerbated if mental health support earlier in our feeder patterns like our middle and elementary school counselors were reduced or eliminated. I think something that we can universally agree on is that there is a rising need for mental health support for our young people. While decisions around the budget are undoubtedly complex, I do not believe that reducing personnel who are on the front lines of student well-being and attendance, AKA funding, is a feasible solution. Back in the Grizzly Counseling Office, you might also see the whiteboard that has our list of ideas for the future, a running tab of aspirations to better serve our students and campus community. I hope that we have the staffing to make these targets a reality. I thank the Board for keeping the seen and unseen roles of mental health workers in schools in mind as they make these difficult decisions. Thank you for your time.
After Kathleen is John Sawyer.
Hello, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm in a unique position in that I've only been a counselor for three years. Before that, I spent twenty years in a first-grade classroom. And what I can tell you is that the support that counselors give elementary school teachers and elementary school students is invaluable. In the last ten years that I spent in the classroom before and after the pandemic, the mental health issues that my first graders were facing were overwhelming. I had students in my class who were unable to control their behavior. They were unable to form relationships. And they were quite honestly imploding my classrooms on some days, and that negatively affected the ability of all the students in the class to learn. If it had not been for getting elementary school counselors at our site after COVID, who ran social groups, ran one-on-one sessions with my, some of my first graders who offered support to those students, those students would have slipped through the crack. So I'm here today to just say to you, it is vital that our elementary school teachers and our elementary school students continue to have mental health supports on their campus. Thank you.
Thank you. After John is Katie Lapata.
Good evening, Board members, Superintendent Kamik, community members. I'm a member of the Cal High Counseling Staff. There have been a few of us that have spoken tonight, and I want to echo the sentiments of all the mental health providers who had the chance to speak tonight. I'm going to try really hard not to hit some of the same points that have already been mentioned to respect the Board's time. But much of what we do is behind-the-scenes work with students so that they can meet the demands of their classes, extracurricular activities, and social commitments. With our work being confidential in nature, each of us, the School Counselors, Support Counselors, Social Workers, must take time to build relationships and earn the trust of each of our students so that they can feel freely, so that they can freely share their needs with us. Because if they don't share them, those needs will go unmet and the strain on the students will only increase. We at Cal High have spent the past several years developing practices to be as proactive as possible when interacting with our students and supporting their needs. These cuts would force us backwards to a place where we can only work in a reactive fashion and not anticipate student needs. And cutting back on the two, excuse me, the Tier Two and Three services will have a significant negative effect on our students with the Tier One services. I want to thank Superintendent Kamik for the revisions to the recommendation. I find those encouraging, and I also want to encourage the Board to seek alternative sources of funding to minimize the cuts to these services that our students so desperately need. And I want to say thank you for giving all of us here the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you. After Katie is Moni Bonzak.
Hello, everyone. My name is Katie Lapata. I'm here as an SRVUSD Middle School and Student Support Counselor for eleven years. I'm currently at Charlotte Wood Middle School. I'm asking that you consider the potentially devastating impact of counselor reductions put forth on the budget proposals. We know that all staff are important to student success, and yet I feel the need to emphasize counselors' vital role in supporting our most vulnerable students. A 2023 CDC survey found that four in ten students report experiencing persistent feelings of sadness or hopelessness. Additionally, suicide is now the second-leading cause of death among young people aged ten to twenty-four. Since 2021, our middle school counselors have completed over four hundred risk assessments and referred more than sixty students for psychiatric evaluations, helping them access critical, life-saving mental health care. These interventions are crucial, especially when students are in crisis, and we are the first line of support in these moments. For many students, counselors are also the first adults they connect with regarding their LGBTQ plus identity. We are their advocates, their safe space, and often the first point of contact for guidance. According to a 2021 survey by the Gay Lesbian and Straight Education Network, LGBTQ plus students with supportive adults in school have higher self-esteem and experience less anxiety and depression. Counselors are instrumental in educating staff, providing support, and creating a welcoming environment for these students. Additionally, we support the one thousand three hundred and twenty students in our district with active Section 504 accommodation plans. Counselors help these students build self-abdulacy skills and ensure that they have the support needed to access an equitable education. Beyond our direct work with students, counselors also play a role as academic advisors, conflict mediators, and essential team members in school, district, and district crisis response. We guide students in developing social skills, study habits, and emotional self-management. We collaborate closely with parents, teachers, and administrators to create a positive school environment for all. On a personal note, I can't even count the number of times I've sat in the school parking lot with a student who can't get out of the car and offers support needed just for them to step a foot on campus. Or the number of meetings in which I've partnered with students, parents, and teachers to navigate the emotional and academic support needed for them to get back in the classroom learning. Or a student who has come to me in tears at eighth grade promotion, saying, "I wouldn't have made it without you." It's these day-to-day interactions that not everyone gets to see, but that all of my colleagues and I know make a difference in students' lives.
Thank you. After Moni is Laurel Burns.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent. My name is Moni Bonzak and I am a social worker supporting the Del Amigo High School and Venture Independent Study Programs. I'm here as an advocate for alternative education and school-based mental health services. It is students who experience both the successes and the shortcomings of our education system. It is in that context that I believe student voice, student insights, experiences, and perspectives are invaluable and they deserve a seat at the table when we make decisions that significantly affect their lives. Thank you, and instead of listening to me, I would like to introduce JoJo Fair, Johanna, I'm gonna say her name right, Jaya Kumar, and also reading a letter from Ariel Aguilar Merritt.
I have a note from my fellow peer that I would like to read. I'm reading this to express the deep concern about the budget cuts that would eliminate school, social workers, including Ms. Moni. As a student at Del Amigo High School, I have experienced and witnessed firsthand valuable support from Ms. Moni. Ms. Moni plays a critical vote, role in addressing mental health and emotional well-being of our students. Moni helps us navigate personal challenges, provides crisis prevention, and offers a safe place for those who need someone to talk to. For many students, including myself, our social worker is our only source of support that we have access to. Our social workers would not only deprive students of essential services, but also negatively affect the overall school environment. It is critical that we maintain these positions to ensure that every student has the opportunity to thrive at a difficult time in their lives. Ms. Moni is there to provide guidance and support when needed. This is a kind of support that is irreplaceable and has been lasting impact on our ability to succeed both academically and personally. Additionally, social workers contribute a lot to the perspective of the school environment by addressing such as bullying, family problems, substance abuse, and the urge to- I urge you to reconsider these budget outputs and recognize that Ms. Moni plays in our community.
Thank you.
I would also like to quickly just mention that getting rid of Ms. Moni and then also the, or an additional like worker at our school, who is like the second, the only other admin aside from our principal, would get rid of eighteen percent of the workers at our school. And this is even before any of the revisions, which increase the amount of staff that would leave our class. And I think that if you compare that to a comprehensive with many more staff, which would be thirty, this is like unfair.
Thank you. After Laurel is Lisa Donahue.
Good evening. My name is Laurel Burns and I've been a teacher librarian for twenty-seven years. I'm here tonight to advocate for something that is truly a lifeline for students, our school libraries and the teacher librarians who staff them. Cal High and Dougherty Valley serve approximately three thousand students each. A few years ago, the School Board recognized the need for an additional teacher librarian at each of these heavily populated sites. The librarians at Cal and DVHS work in partnership to support multiple classes simultaneously, offering direct assistance to students when they need it most. But the role of the library goes far beyond just books and research. It is a crucial part of the mental health support system within our schools. The library is one of the few spaces that is open all day to students. It serves as a sanctuary, a quiet place to reflect, study, or simply take a break from the noise of the day. For many students, especially those struggling with mental health challenges, the library is one of the only places where they truly feel safe. Having two teacher librarians at these larger sites means that our libraries can be open before school and after school, as well as throughout the entire day, offering consistent support and resources to every student who needs them. With three thousand students that need a significant, that is significant, and it is critical that we maintain this level of service to meet the academic and emotional needs of our student populations. Libraries are essential spaces. I know you recognize that. When libraries, though, are understaffed, resources are harder to access, and the students are left without the supports they need. If the proposed cut goes through, hours of operation will decrease and wait times for students and staff will increase. I urge you to consider the impact of maintaining these positions, and I really do truly thank you for your time and the work that you're putting in.
Thank you. After Lisa is Michael Stiglich.
Hi, I'm Lisa and this is SIA. We have a proposed budget cut of five hours for our, our work week. And I want to tell you what SIA is because from what I understand, not a lot of people understand what it is. SIA stands for Center for Early Intervention of Autism. So what we do is early intervention. We start with the three-year-olds. How many people know that three-year-olds go to the schools? Not many. But we start with those three-year-olds, and they're all in special education. And we don't just address children with autism, any type of special needs. We've had children with Rets, we've had children with Down Syndrome, so we service any child with special needs. And we set them up for success. We are that first stepping stone. They come to us, we work on sitting in a chair. Some of our children won't even sit in a chair for two seconds. So we're working on classroom readiness. We're trying to prepare them for TK, kindergarten, all of those further steps. I think it was said something about what the long-term capacity was gonna be. This is a short-term fix by cutting our hours. But if you look at our success, we've mainstreamed some of our kids. We've had children go from rolling on the floor, hitting their head, and not being able to talk. And we call that nonverbal. And if they can't tell us what their problem is, that we can't figure out, like, hey, I have a stomach ache, I have a headache. Our job is to help them figure out how to communicate, how to help them address that. So if we can do that at three and help them learn to communicate, hey, I have a problem, I need your help, that's gonna help the transitions class later on down the road. that's gonna help the transitions class later on down the road. We might need to be one-on-one now, but when they're twenty-two years old, they may only need to be in the transitions class with a much lower um yeah, ratio, sorry. Um, so, short-term goal, yes, cutting our hours would, wouldn't allow us to do what you want us to do. You want us to take data? You wanna see how many times that child hits their head? You wanna see if they can sit in a chair? You wanna see if they're ready to go into a less restrictive classroom? I have that data, but the only way I can take that data is I have the data, then I have to do stuff with it afterwards. So I have these children. I can't do everything with that data while working with a child who's slamming their head on the ground. So taking the data, being able to tell the next person, hey, this worked, let's try this. Being able to communicate, sharing our data is important. That's what we need that hour for. And if we lose the hour, sometimes we wouldn't be able to cover all the time that the children are in because of their IEP. Sorry, thank you.
Thank you. After Michael is Jim Smith with.
Hello, uh, I hope everybody's well. Uh, my name is Michael Steglick and I'm from the AV team. I wanted to thank uh, all the members for letting us speak about the issues and eliminating the whole A-team department. Um, our department provides an invaluable service to the district. Uh, our eight AV team is here to serve the students, staff, school district, and we have over fifty years of combined experience in our field. By consulting with the AV team, the district will save our school's money, resources, while creating longevity and a plan to realize future savings. It was said in our last meeting that the low-voltage techs in the maintenance department could do our jobs, but low voltage is only four percent of our job. Please look at the AV and low-voltage electrician job description. Low-voltage electricians have no AV essential job functions. AV in, in the AV job description, uh, there's only a fraction of a sentence that describes low voltage. The low-voltage electrician is not trained in AV areas and the knowledge base does not align with the knowledge base of AV work. This is like saying a plumber can do an electrician's job because he can bend a pipe. The AV team supports NPR, theaters, commons, marquees, security cameras, etc. Also, this would disturb, um, distribute work across different union examples. I remember that the board was talking about um, renting out the NPR, theaters, commons, and, and marquees to facilitate alternative revenue. If there is no AV team to, in the school district that would repair the damaged facilities, the school district will have to shop out repairs to third-party vendors. This will eat up much, if not all, the alternative generated income to the school district. Our facilities take a lot of abuse when we rent out these to public facilities. We presently have two tickets open for the AV support to upcoming theater events. Why is this? Because the sites need our specialized services. The AV team provides solutions at a fraction of the price. It is self-evident and no one has considered the monetary cost or the safety considerations for eliminating the AV team. A few examples is in Dougherty, the marquee was down for over a year. An outside vendor charged ten thousand dollars to look at it. The, the outside company told the um, school district that they would have to spend sixty thousand dollars to repair it. It was unreparable. The AV team rectified the situation with three hours and saved sixty thousand dollars. Um, prior, um, a safety, the safety that we provide is even more important than the mu- uh, savings that we give. A forty-five-pound projector fell off the wall on John, um, John Baldwin. The projector was installed directly above the lunch line, and if it would have fell during school's hours, it could have injured or killed a, a student. The projector was installed by an outside vendor. The AT team, AV team would have installed this projector per DSA standards. I challenge the board to consider the cost of eliminating the whole AV team. We can show how we can save the school district uh, money, a huge ROI, and uh, realize future savings.
Thank you. After Jim is Denise Springer.
According to the Law Department of Santa Clara University, the definition of transparency in government is, quote, transparency means that something can be seen through. When we talk about transparency in government, we mean that citizens must be able to see through its workings to know exactly what goes on when public officials transact public business. Government is not transparent, that is not transparent, parent is more prone to corruption and undue influence because there is no public oversight of the decision-making process, unquote. The Brown Act in section fi- five-four-nine-five-two-point-two defines a meeting as, quote, "Any gathering of a quorum of a legislative body to discuss or transact business under the body's jurisdiction. Serial meetings are prohibited." Furthermore, even though, uh, uh, out of quote, furthermore, even though a serial meeting normally refers to board members ta- talking individually amongst themselves, the Brown, uh, Brown Act further specifies that, quote, "A serial meeting occurs when intermediaries, intermediaries for board members have a meeting to discuss issues." The re- uh, unquote, the reasoning behind the prohibition of serial meetings is that, according to the Brown Act, problems arise when-
Does this have to do with the budget?
Please don't interrupt me. Yes, it does. Um, problems arise when the systematic communications begin to occur, which involve members of the board acquiring substantive information for an upcoming meeting or engaging in debate, discussions, lobbying, or any other aspect of the deliberative, deliberative processes amongst themselves or with staff, out of quote. The Brown Act further um, reasons-
If your information that you're supplying is not about the agenda item, which it hasn't tied to it so far, then you're gonna need to stop.
This is um, very, very pertinent to it. It is, thank you. It is um, part of the um, it is um, part of the situation that we're going through right now, particularly dealing with the transparency of the process that we're in. We haven't been, and so what I'm doing, I'm laying out the Brown Act, because apparently you guys-
This is not, this is not the time and place to do this. This agenda item is for budget, is about budget.
And it's a, this is about-
If you wanna talk about budget cuts, you can.
Transparency about that budget, you may not like it, but according to the Brown Act, you can't stop me. If you stop me, you're in violation of the Brown Act.
No, I'm not in violation of the Brown Act because, because we're on this agenda item that is a budget item. If you have something to say about the budget cuts, you can do that.
You may not like what I'm saying, but this is about the budget process that we're going through and the lack of transparency that you have allowed-
Okay, then tie, then tie it together.
I will. Let me talk. Thank you.
You have? Okay.
The reason behind the prohibition of the serial meetings is that, according to the Brown Act, problems arise when systematic communications begin to occur, which involve members of the board acquiring substantive information for an upcoming meeting or engaging in debate, discussions, or lobbying in any other aspect of the deliberative process amongst themselves or with staff. The Brown Act further reasons that whether it is a board member, executive member, or staff, the meetings used to determine the termination status of employees, which happened to, happen in the dark back rooms of the SRVUSD Ed Center, can be problematic according to the Brown Act. In general, to um, to go back over without having to educate you too much, okay? The fact that the ad hoc reasoning by Superintendent Camac in these um, in these proceedings leading to the destruction of employees' rights and lives has occurred secretly behind closed doors, and even upon the request, no meeting minutes have been divulged to the public describing these procedures. These serial meetings violate the Brown Act and invalidate this section of the bo- of the school board, including the biased documentation that has been submitted to this board for consideration and a final vote.
Okay, thank you. After Denise is Renee Nickerson.
Good evening, superintendent and the board. My name is Denise Springer and I'm a current Rainbow Specialist and forward parent in the San Ramon Valley Unified School District. Thank you for allowing me to talk with you today. I've been an employee in this district for twenty-one years and eighteen of them have been serving in the Rainbow Program. We have a centralized person and to dismiss this person who orchestrates many duties would be a disservice not only to the program, but the specialists that we work together. At each of our schools is our district. Because we have one lead person who is credentialed and certificated, she oversees all of our various forms, keeping our program up to date and current with the legalities involved. There's a meticulous format that needs to be followed for each program to service the students effectively and efficiently. Our program thrives because we have one lead person that is trained and committed to making sure our district is getting the best intervention services for all our students. The position of this liaison that keeps our program moving forward and smoothly, giving the responsibility to each school of this program would disrupt and ruin the continuity of forward progress that this district has endured for thirty-eight years. Myself, the other Rainbow Specialists are here to support Renee. She is our um, our mental health project coordinator, supervisor. We report to her, she reports to the principals, to the district. Renee's above and beyond dedication and care that she gives to us individually, to each of our schools. Would, I would ask each of you to reconsider the decision to cut her position from our district. Um, thank you again for this opportunity and for listening to all of us tonight.
Thank you. After Renee is Ben Mendoza.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am Renee Nickerson and I've been a school psychologist in this district since two thousand and three and currently oversee the Rainbow Program for the district. I've also been a parent in this community for close to thirty years. I've worked at every level in this district, including the Continuation High School and the Transition Program, and have a deep understanding of our district's mental health supports. First of all, I want to thank you for your work on the board, particularly during this challenging time with really difficult decisions to be made. However, I need all of you to understand the role of the coordinator of this program currently identified as- The Rainbow Program is a low-cost, high-impact, tier-two SEL program that's been in our district for over thirty-eight years. I've been part of this program for fifteen and I've overseen this program for eight years. Um, in which time, over this time, it has been reduced from a three-point-O FTE to a one-point-O FTE. Throughout this, there has always been a central coordinator of this program who is a school psychologist with a strong mental health background and knowledge of the program. Last school year, the Rainbow Program provided over twenty-four thousand sessions of direct support for the SRVUSD Elementary School children. This is a research-based program and it makes a difference to our students and a lot of students. The delivery of this program rests on our paraprofessionals and we are very fortunate to have twenty-four caring, committed, and highly-trained paraprofessionals that I support through direct consultation, initial and ongoing training, and immediate availability when challenges or questions surface. The theory of practice and the research behind this program is rated, rooted in tight curriculum, delivery, training, close supervision, and direct consultation by knowledgeable school psychologists with ongoing availability to support a non-credentialed and non-licensed paraprofessional delivering mental health support. This condition is essential for the efficacy of the program and the service delivery. I understand programs evolve and I've been part of the evolution of this program for two decades. I've seen models where consistent supervision and support of our paraprofessionals has not been the focus or primary responsibility of those on-site as they are completely inundated with other job responsibilities. I've lived through this even when extra FTE was given. This minimizes the efficacy of the program. It presents a risk for safety for children with child find, mandated reporting, appropriate interventions, and the implementation of best mental health practices, which presents great liability for this district. This program cannot be a checkbox and it must never have a negative impact on children and put their safety at risk because of lack of direct, immediate, and consistent support and guidance for the paraprofessionals who commit to this program every day for the children of our district. I urge you to please reconsider the reduction of the one-point-O FTE Rainbow Program School Psychologist who plays a very critical role. The amount you will save with this reduction is so minimal compared to the importance of this position in running a successful program for literally thousands of children in this district. Thank you so much for your-
Thank you. After Ben is Daniel Gross.
Good eve- good evening. My name is Ben Mendoza. I'm a community member and I'm also a teacher at Mona Vista High School. I use tech tools and software within my instructional practice every day. It's for this reason I was drawn to the program's reduction slide in the draft proposal containing the line item labeled, "Eliminate instructional software and technology tools", and it has an associated cost savings of five hundred thousand dollars. This large-ticket item made me concerned about what software and what technology tools are gonna be eliminated. The other line items in the draft reduction plan are very specific, yet this, this one is open-ended and generic. In addition, I'm concerned about the process for determining what software and what technology tools are gonna be eliminated. Specifically, I am here asking that teachers, counselors, support teachers all have the opportunity to provide input on what software and tech tools are critical for providing quality instruction and support to our students before deciding to eliminate them. Last year, there was a proposal for reducing tech tools, which included a number, number of tools like illuminate and formative that were gonna be cut without feedback from teachers and staff. Fortunately, this initial decision was reconsidered after we learned what was on the chopping block and made our concerns heard. We were able to keep these instructional tools, technology tools this year, but how long, for how long? Teachers need to know what tools we can expect to have and should not have to learn at the end of May that something that we use will not be available with no time to prepare. Given the current budgetary constraints, it's prudent for us to use the effective and efficient tools we currently have. It is not wise to embark on a new speculative and untested programs or tools that are not being requested by users. As an example, Google Classroom was foisted upon teachers this school year as a curriculum delivery tool despite many secondary teachers not wanting or asking for it due to the poor experience during lockdown. After many requests, the tech, technology department fully enabled access to the Infinite Campus Learning Suite as an alternative to Google Classroom or to be used in conjunction with it. IC allows for special ed teachers, counselors, support teachers, and parents to be able to efficiently monitor progress of their students in all of their classes. This legal requirement for support teachers is a feature that Google Classroom does not provide, but IC does effectively. So I wanted to take a moment to thank all of those who worked to get the IC Learning Suite fully enabled at the beginning of the semester. For IC users like myself and others, it has proven to be effective and efficient, and we are relieved to avoid the Google Classroom glitches that cropped up multiple times last semester. I encourage our technology team to lean in and provide more active support for the IC Learning Suite in the coming years because it works well. Circling back to the program reduction slide, I conclude by reiterating my request for transparency and the teachers and staff be afforded the opportunity to be active participants in the decision-making process when determining which tech tools are to be eliminated. With effort, we can work together to make the best of the worst choices before us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening. My name is Daniel Gross. I'm a recent graduate of Mona Vista High School and I have a younger sister who's still in this district, and so I wanted to share some of my perspective on the proposed budget cuts. Um, primarily, I want to emphasize the absolutely massive impact that our mental health and equity positions have on every single student. While these blanket terms are easily misunderstood, let me explain specifically why we need to continue funding them. The impact of our district's focus on mental health over the past few years cannot be emphasized enough. Programs like our wellness centers and onsite counseling benefit every single student and need to be present on our campuses every single day. Having counselors available doesn't just mean that students who are diagnosed with mental illnesses can get the help they need, although, as we've heard tonight, they do a phenomenal job of this. It also means that the student who's had an exhausting week because they had five tests and two soccer games has somewhere safe and easy to go to feel less stressed. It means that the student whose friend group has been arguing nonstop has somewhere that they can go, someone they can talk to for advice so that they feel welcomed on campus. It means that the student who doesn't know how to approach their teacher to ask for an extension on assignment and is too afraid to ask their parents is still able to get the help they need to succeed in the classroom. Our counselors also support students in class selection, college applications, and- Our counselors also support students in class selection, college applications, and preparing for careers after high school. And having experienced all of my high school in the post-COVID world, I cannot tell you enough how important supporting students' mental health is if we want them to succeed academically and after graduating from SRVUSD schools. And so I appreciate the reexamined budget cuts tonight and I urge you to continue to examine some of these reductions. Additionally, equity work is often misconstrued as teaching about cultural differences in minority groups, but it is so much more than just this. In my experience as a student, I worked very closely with our district's Director of Equity, Dr. Wen, meeting almost every single week and holding events every month of my senior year. Dr. Wen was a critical part of the organization of the Israel-Palestine Conversations at Montevista, an event that impacted me personally along with over 60 other students from across our district, creating a safer and more comfortable environment on high school campuses during stressful times. She was also there for many key discussions at Montevista that helped form the Equity Leadership Coalition, uniting all of our affinity clubs to support everyone from LGBTQ plus students to racial and religious minorities to students with different abilities. Many times I've discussed with her the grade reforms that will help fundamentally change the way we teach and help prepare our district's students to succeed in the real world. And of course, we've also met to discuss building a new curriculum for the Ethnic Studies Course which is required for all high school students within the next few years. She's an irreplaceable part of the machine that is our school district. And by combining her position away, our students and staff will lose a leader and an advocate that has made our schools that has made our schools function equitably so that every student gets what they need to succeed. I urge you to please reexamine these proposed cuts as these roles are critical to the success of our students.
Thank you, Daniel. Okay, thank you everyone for your comments and your patience. I appreciate it. And I'm going to turn it back over to Superintendent Kamik for a couple of closing comments.
Thank you very much, President Clark, and I echo your sentiments. I want to thank everybody who came to provide public comment, everybody who's provide provided written public comment. I think there is a commonality in the sense that, as I described earlier, we are all putting our best effort forward to serve students. And I think we do that best by working together. When I, when I listen to the public comment that's been provided, I think it's ample evidence that this is the circumstance where we are in, we're at a threshold where we're going to be making decisions and recommendations that are detrimental to our students. And as I shared earlier, that is a pain point that is hard to describe, but I think many of you can understand and sense the feeling behind that. I think we also have to keep in mind a little bit of a parallel path. I don't want to underscore the, I don't want to diminish the remarks that have been made tonight in any way. They've been very thoughtful and profound. But I think we have to describe two parallel paths that are going to operate together and that is, one is the the remarkably challenging situation of making these budget reductions and the detrimental impact it will have across the district on adults and students and the community. And at the same time, understanding that when we move through this process and cross this this hurdle, we have to regroup together. Because as we heard tonight, for some of our students, and we had multiple people describe the student population they serve as the most vulnerable. Some were young, some were our older students. And I think they're all right because they're all correct because the most vulnerable student depends on the kiddo and it depends on the moment. And I, and I think we have to acknowledge that when we get through this process, we will be trying to serve our students with less collective resources. And I think as you heard tonight, for some students in need, it's a social worker that's going to, that's going to be the saving grace. For other students, it's the counselor. We heard tonight that for some students, it's the librarian. For some students, it's the classroom teacher where they spend the bulk of their time and build some uniquely special relationships. For some of our students, it's going to be the athletic coach. For some of our students, it's the para educator. As a principal, I had a student who only got through school because of a daily check-in with a custodian. I had another student who had to come into the office every morning to give the office manager a hug. And without it, that student would have never made it through any day on school campus. And so we are at an incredibly painful point in the process. And I want to encourage us to remember that after we get through this painful point, we will then have to regroup together to collectively serve all of our students again with less resources. You will not hear me say that any of the public comment or written communication, it is absolutely evidence that we need these positions. I don't think people are looking around saying we have an abundance or an overwhelming amount of anything. Let's keep advocating for the state and federal funding that we deserve because we can see we need more to serve our students collectively and we're faced with the difficulty of trying to do it with less. And so I just wanted to say that. One note I forgot to mention in the beginning. I forgot to clarify and I apologize. In the original budget reduction, we had SAT and ACT and PSAT. I just want to reiterate what I said in the first meeting. Those will continue. We're going to change the structure, but the offerings are not going to go away. Changing the structure of how we do it will yield a savings, but the offering for our students will not go away. Our students will not be searching for another place to take those tests outside of the district. Additionally, I do want to clarify. We did hear a public comment regarding the Brown Act and a request for me to provide notes. And I want to be very transparent about that. I did receive a request from a member of the community to provide the notes on the rationale and the process behind my recommendations. There are no notes. I think if you followed along in our process, we established a budget advisory committee. That committee represented parents, community members, students, and staff of all of our labor groups and management. That committee produced a report. In conjunction with that, I worked to establish this budget recommendation list. I titled it the Superintendent's Recommendation because it's my recommendation. I absolutely consulted with my executive cabinet and I consulted with my cabinet team. And when the staff comes together to work, that work is not subject to the Brown Act or every staff meeting we have in the district be subject to the Brown Act. And so I recognize that there may be disagreement about the list. I recommend that, I understand that individuals may disagree with some of the sentiments that I'm sharing. I am confident in the transparency of the work that we've done. It is not all work products that I create as recommendations are subject to the Brown Act. I'm not the elected official. I'm the superintendent. And I acknowledge that there's frustration about that. And I acknowledge that an individual is talking about it right now, Mr. Smithwick. I apologize. I'm trying to address my turn to speak. Dr. Smithwick. I think there can be ample room for disagreement, but I pride myself on having a unifying point of transparency. If anybody has questions, my door's open. Thank you.
Okay, so.
Well, I just want to piggyback on the Brown Act point too because I think it raises a shadow of lack of transparency that's happening at the district level or at the board level. But to echo what Mr. Kamik was saying, Brown Act does govern legislative bodies. And so that would be the reason that when Shalley and I sat on the Budget Advisory Committee, it was just two. That's what Brown Act allows. It was never three. And it, and you're right about serial meetings. That's why we are so careful and cognizant in our communications. Where I, you know, I never call Rachel and say, hey, call Laura and ask her what she's thinking. We don't do that. We've been instructed on that very thoroughly and we abide by it to the deepest extent of what that provides. So I just want to be clear with everybody because transparency is super important. And I just, I just want to put a nail on that.
Thank you. So I don't know how you want to open this up. Do you want to start with the first proposal? Or do you have questions? Or how do you want to move forward as far as discussing the rest of the plans?
I wanted to just see if CJ could talk a little bit about the the CEA program and how those cuts in five hours across the board would affect the program and the services for the students.
Yeah, I think like many other things that we will discuss tonight on this list, there will be effects. So I don't ever want to describe that there won't. But I think we have to look at how will we do things differently based on the amount of staffing that we have after completing budget reductions. Our special education team believes that we can adequately and appropriately serve the students that are in the program and the number of students in some ways is declining. And so we'll be addressing the staffing related to that. The design may have to look a little bit different. As we heard our speaker say, we have obligations under the law for what are written into a student's IEP and we won't staff at a level where we can't ensure that those services are met.
I have a quick question on the Speak Up Be Safe program because we did get, I got a few emails on, I think the entire board did as well. And it's just a follow-up question because I know we've spoken about it before. I think the line item is $175,000 a year. What is the hope with that? Have we learned, have we learned from that program where we can somewhat replicate that in years to come? Or is this altogether going away?
The program itself does bring a unique perspective in terms of the Child Prevention Council supporting our students. I would say that a lot of the resources that they provide, we can work with other providers to help replicate. In a nutshell, that's, it's a unique program. It's a contracted service. They do absolutely do a wonderful job providing unique services. But I think we would work with our local personnel to be able to take what we've learned from that program in conjunction with the support services that we have in play to develop a program to model the same means.
Yeah, okay. Because I just, and that was my concern is if it was just to absolutely go away and off our radar. Because I do think it's a very valuable program. So thank you for answering that question.
Can staff address the item that Mr. Mendoza brought up about eliminating instructional software? Were there particular programs already identified or is that more like a line item that we're just going to consolidate there?
It's a line item that we will reach that threshold of reductions. It's really about looking at, you know, what can we live without? And I think, you know, Mr. Mendoza's input is certainly valued and how can we engage people in that process? And this is, again, a good example of why we would seek a variance over 24 million. That is, that's a prime example. Maybe we, we believe on initial estimates that we could make $500,000 of reduction. And maybe it turns out that it's 425,000 or 400. And in a comprehensive budget reduction list, those things can add up. And that's why we need the, that's why we're, staff is requesting that $26 million variance. So it's not a prescribed list that's already established completely, but I don't want to misrepresent that the technology isn't starting to work on where we can reach those savings in conjunction with conversations with, with ed services.
And a line item like that doesn't affect layoff notices. So it's in a little bit different category as are a lot of things on the first page, right?
Correct.
Can I address another concern that came up at public comment is in the Rainbow Room Coordinator? So with, with that position, if that position is removed, then who has, where does that work go to? Is there, will there be someone at the district level that will support those paras? How will that, what will that look like?
Yes. And so I think that's a great question and it really, I think, reflects the work that's in front of us. When I described, we have to regroup and repurpose and retool what we're going to do. With the elimination of that position, and I want to take a moment and acknowledge the great work and service that Ms. Nickerson has provided historically and currently to the program, it is not a statement about her exceptional quality. It is, that program would stay in place. Another individual would absorb the supervision and coordination. And that is not an easy task, but that's why I described we, and I shared with, with some of our administrative team today. When we get through this process, we have to redefine what we hope to accomplish and how we serve the students that we serve. If we have 50 marks that we're trying to accomplish every year, let's just take that as a, as a talking point. And we reduce the district's operational budget and that usually means people, since 88% of our budget is people. By $24 million, we can't try to hit 50 targets next year. So we have to refine our focus on what we're going to accomplish. Where those responsibilities will land is not unilaterally decided. I think we have a lot of that work in front of us in conjunction with things like reducing from six coordinators to three coordinators in ed services. There has to be a thoughtful redistribution of what we do and what we can continue to prioritize. The program would stay, the supervision organization and coordination would look different. And I don't want to say that it would look the same.
And I kind of piggyback on that. I guess that would apply also to our classified positions too because, you know, as we heard from our AV team as well as, you know, I'm looking at SEIU, right? Even from the last time that we're at the proposal, 10 custodians. And that would like that strategy of like, are we going to do the work now?
Yeah, I think that's a very accurate statement and I think we have to look at what will we do differently and how will we do it differently? And the things that are on the reduction list, I really want to reiterate are not a value statement of the people in those positions or the services provided. It is a practical reality and a recommendation for me based on the need to, in the last 12 months, get to 37 and a half million dollars of reductions. It is not a statement that the AV team, for example, doesn't do great work and isn't a pivotal part of the district. Historically, I don't know that we've always had AV techs in the district. But we've managed that work at different times. And we may have to reconsider how we manage it moving forward. I think it's a very valid perspective to share the two job descriptions that were shared with the board today during public comment. But that is also the, the legal mandate and I think the appropriate collaborative process to sit down with bargaining units and say, how do we figure this out moving forward? And under the ed code for classified reductions, the ed code is very clear. It has to be a lack of work or a lack of funds. Those are the only two reasons you can reduce or eliminate a position in the classified service. I have not seen places in this district where we have a lack of work. I have been remarkably impressed since the date I started here in July and when I worked here a decade ago. How much work gets done by people here? When we talk about these reductions, it is a lack of funds. And that is what the negotiation process stipulates. We then have to negotiate where does the work go? And that can take many iterations through the collaborative process at the bargaining table.
I have a question for you Superintendent Kamik. So in, in our first option that you proposed to the board, you mentioned that we have leftover COVID funds that we could use to sustain 11 FTE of elementary counselors for one more year. But we don't see that for option number two. So is that, are those funds being used elsewhere or what's, what's going on with that?
No, in option number two, to our student trustee, I think that's a great question. In the second option, they're included on the reduction list. And so those positions would go away. That funding would be repurposed as part of reaching budget savings. Yep.
But that funding is only around for one more year.
Correct. And, and I think that that highlights another important point which I think is worth addressing. When you look at the budget reduction plan in total, you'll see general fund, you'll see restricted fund. There is a lot of managing the financial aspects of the district where we will be looking at, as we described in the very, very beginning and as we talked about with our Budget Advisory Committee, where can we use restricted or categorical dollars to free up general fund dollars? And sometimes when we make reductions, they're in categorical areas. How do we repurpose that? How can we restructure that? Again, another reason to have that $2 million variance because there are positions, for example, that have been historically funded out of bond dollars. We're at the end of the bond. And so if we don't make reductions in that, we then have to assume we're absorbing the cost in the general fund. And so there's a lot of those things that go into the calculation.
Can I ask you to clarify about the 11 FTEs with one-time dollars? We just have a year of funding left. So a year from now then, are we going to have to make further cuts? If we choose that option, option two, because that does, because now we have, you know, we no longer have that money.
Yeah, but I don't think that that in and of itself will be the reason we have to make future cuts.
Right, but while that causes to make some future cuts.
We'll have to find ways. We'll have to find ways, we'll have to find ways to adjust, whether it's uh you know. I don't want to say no because that's not accurate, but I do think it depends. As an example. What's gonna happen with the governor's budget from January? Initial proposals, I don't see anything that really hurts us substantially. But I don't see anything that makes our picture um improve enough where I think I would make a different recommendation on the target line. However, in early previews, we have seen an inclination from the governor to continue providing some learning recovery block grant dollars. How much we get and how much is is sustained through the governor's proposal to the legislature's approval of the budget? I think it's a little bit early to tell. If we do get some one time dollars, then we'd have to come back and say, okay, this changes our picture a little bit. So I do think trustee Brad, in terms of option two, where we're eliminating those elementary counselor positions. We will have to manage financially, what happens with the annual cost of one point five million of those grant dollars? And that, you know, that may change over time. If you look at it black and white, just in that line of the budget item, we need to, we need to offset that.
Yeah.
The 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 question is, is there anything else that happens that that offsets that?
Right, right. Whereas in option one, that that reduction is baked in ongoing. Option two, that reduction is not baked in ongoing.
In option two, the the.
The other, the other way around.
Yeah.
Around, sorry.
And the other piece, and Danny may be able to, Mr. Helmet may be able to describe this a little bit better than I do, but we have to look at the the revenue and expense side. The revenue goes away, and if we don't also eliminate the expense associated with it, then it adds to the deficit spending factor. So um the the reduction would be ongoing, the savings might be shorter.
Right.
Yeah.
So in option two, we're only, we're retaining three point two FTE of the seven point two for the counselors for high school. That's for middle and high school. That's the academic counselors.
Yes, that's correct.
So that's instead of the ratio beast, it's it's just a a flat number of counselors.
Correct. In the original proposal, I I had proposed that we changed the ratio. Changing the ratio, we calculated to be about seven point two FTE in savings um or in reductions. And when crafting scenario two, it was an effort to try and find a balance of maintaining some. Counseling, mental health services and protecting twenty two FTE in in class size increases. And class sizes for the the pivotal grades of K through three in middle school.
So that restoration, that line item related to academic counselors would need to be translated into some sort of ratio to do the staffing. But right now, it's just.
It's presented as FTE and that too would be subject to negotiations with Servia, so we would sit down at the table and and talk about the. The the board's approved reduction list and how do we negotiate that with Servia? What collaborative solutions do we find? And it doesn't necessarily, you know, we try and staff by formula because of changes in enrollment to maintain some equity across the district. And staffing allocations. I acknowledge this recommendation might be a little bit more messy, but I'm I'm confident that the the teams can. Can work through the solution there.
Um last meeting, I asked a question related to the elementary counselors, like what would be the impact? And would it be worthwhile if we saved half of them? And I'm interested if you guys could tell us what you learned.
Yeah, um I I think it's. The feedback that that we received is is I I want to offer it within context. I don't think anybody's describing that they don't want elementary counselors. But there was a lot of perspective shared that if the staffing is only, let's say, for example, one person. One day a week at one school. I think we we lose the efficiency of service, the deep connection that's needed. And I think we have to be, the feedback we received is we have to be mindful about how do we manage the expectations? If we're expecting that student to greatly benefit from the counseling support provided and expecting the counselor to do the great work that they're capable of doing. We might be missetting the expectations in only having it one day a week.
And I should have clarified how I asked the question last time. It was like, do we dilute it so much? That it doesn't have the desired impact, because then it's very much like a skip counselor if it's only.
Yeah, and I think that that summarizes really the feedback is not that people don't see value in it, but that. It is so diminished, it may not reach the kind of the the effective level we would hope. And that may leave lead even more frustration because as a classroom teacher myself. Um I never had a counselor. As an elementary principal, we funded a counselor with our Title One funds. And as you heard tonight in public comment, our teachers relied on that support. I was then a principal of a larger school that didn't have counselor after that. We still had to come together as a staff to support our kids, but we had to retool how we were going to do it. And I think clarity and expectation will be an important part of how we repurpose our resources to serve all kids.
Can I ask in terms of the social worker structure that we have on the um the scenario two? And with the reduction and then with um removing elementary counselors. How would a a elementary school student, where would they get support? Would that one floating social worker push into all grade levels to be able to support individual students? And it would be at that, I'm assuming, I'm assuming it's called level three, right? Like, how how is, how does that work?
Yeah, and I I apologize and I don't mean to frustrate the board with this response. Um and and Christine, if you have some other ideas, please feel free to jump in. I think those are part of things of how we need to reestablish what we're going to do. We have to hold the conversation and some of that happens at the bargaining table and and. We have a service as was described in in some public comment. This is the level of service that we have become accustomed to, and we're going to have to redefine how we serve our students. So it may mean that people are responsible for more. It may mean that one person is more itinerant and and travels around. It may be a a division somewhere in between of those things. As an example, we we talked previously about our uh district level coordinators going from six to three. We're gonna have to take a look at everything that all six do and figure out what do we want to prioritize and how to divide it into three FTE as opposed to six. And I think that's gonna be a a similar circumstance for our social workers. Um and we won't be able to deliver the same level of service, but we'll have to restrategize and reprioritize what service we can deliver and how.
Is it fair to assume that the personnel that are filling those roles will have some input? And how they can best cover the work?
So I think it it's going to be a little bit dependent um and I.
I don't mean like a straight democracy, but like they're the boots on the ground. They 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 know, they know what needs to be done, I would think.
Yeah, and so I would say we would endeavor to that, but for the areas that are required to be negotiated. Servia is the exclusive representative of those individuals, and it would be illegal and inappropriate for me to go directly to those individuals and say. How do we rework this? Those conversations would be reserved for the bargaining table. And I and I think, you know, I I don't want to speak for Servia, um but I I think that they will have their process. To gain feedback from their members doing the work and 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 they'll bring that to the table. And if it's a the coordinator adjustment that's not within the scope of Servia, then you know, we. We would be sitting down collectively and getting some feedback from people who are doing the work and there's just that. I just want to clarify that to the extent that it's negotiable, we we need to let that happen at the table.
And that would be mirrored mirrored with our other union partners as well, right, with parent educators and.
And I think that's an important note because it, some people may say, well, well, why haven't, why hasn't somebody come talk to me about how we're gonna change this? And the majority of the time, it's because for for me or a member of our administrative team to come talk to an employee about how we're gonna rework this. Or redesign this would be circumventing the collective bargaining process, and we would rightfully be in trouble for doing so.
So maybe everyone should kind of be on alert that if their positions are being affected. They should talk to the people who represent them.
Yes, and I think our labor groups are gonna do a great job of 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 that work. It it's a sequence of events where. Once the board says this is what we approve as the budget reduction plan, I think. It sounds too simplified to say things are going to fall into place, but that's the moment where there's some more um concrete information. That our labor groups can uh work with, organize behind, prepare for negotiations. And there's a, there's a lot of work in front of us.
So what I'm struggling with with option two, I'll just tell you where I am. Um I think the increase in class size in elementary is is important that we. Keep those class sizes as small as possible. That being said, I can't get, I can't get past the increase. Decreasing the number of counselors, especially in the high schools, because their numbers are so large already. That I I just think it would be. Really detrimental to not have them in place, especially if we're reducing. Um the social workers.
I'll offer a counter to that. I think none of us remember a time. Where kids in kindergarten through third grade were in huge classes, even during. The economic downturn of two thousand eight where we could raise class size. We we raised it for a very short term, and that was one of the first things that got put back, not just by us, but by the state. I also worry, I mean, because that's where the foundations of their learning comes from. That's where all those things about sitting to learn and all of that. So that's where I think, I guess the reason I'm leaning more towards priority two, I guess I should weigh it. I see it like a scale in that it it's sort of. Hits the 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 middle a little better. It gives, takes counselors away from elementary, but it gives them the lower ratio for the little ones. By the time kids are in fourth and fifth grade, they kind of know how to do elementary school and they they have their safe people they can go to. Not always, but that it's it's a little more solid. They've been there for a while. And middle school's a lot of transition. I think we've kind of hit that balance scale by not hitting the class size as hard. But taking away some of the support staff and then in high school, I think it's outstanding that we've been. That the proposal is to keep all four support counselors, because it sounds like those are the ones that most focus on the kids in crisis. Academic counseling is critically important, but we're not talking about doubling the the ratios. It would be increasing them. Probably in the vicinity of that, that fifty that was in the original proposal. So I think it's the the softest impact for this ugliness.
No, I agree that elementary school numbers should stay down.
Okay, I misunderstood what you were saying then.
But I, it's just that carries a big number with it, right? So then we're looking at high school counselors with these huge numbers and adding more to that. Especially, like I said, if we're reducing our social workers.
So but but then the question comes, then where do we, where do we pull from to get that, right? It's like, there's, there's no, there's absolutely no good answer in this. I mean, the 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 only answer is more money and.
We don't have that.
We don't have that.
I do think it's also important to address some of the comments that were made about the revenue side. I mean, we are going to work on all those, and I'd like to remind everybody that we also tried last spring to address one of those things. It just didn't pass. I mean, we have been dealing with this looming cliff of what to do about the end of one time money for a while. We've made good progress over, since LCFF went into effect, about improving our counseling ratio. It's not good to go back, but our counseling ratio is in better shape than some places. And so it's just, you have to kind of have perspective because we have to recalibrate. What we view as as normal and then work really hard at figuring out more money. And maybe this is the impetus for a future parcel tax that now is dedicated to to student supports. And in a way that we can articulate in a way, because now people know what's missing as opposed to where we were last spring where they really didn't get it.
Which, to be fair, we did try to get that with ENF and and you know, it's it's a, I think this will be the. Oh, wow, like now, now we get it, because there was a lot that was not understood about ENF, even though the effort was fully there.
Well, an F would have generated, I think it was four point five ish million dollars. We can see from these cuts. We needed a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Which accentuates that slide that CJ's been showing to the community all fall about where we fit. Relative to parcel tax funding compared to districts with similar LCFF like us. And so it's it's a challenge.
And and I think it's, you know, a lot of these these great ideas around bring, trying to 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 generate more revenue. I think one of the things that is becoming clear and clear is that we don't have control over how much money we get from the state. But we could potentially have a little, it's not gonna be a lot of money, but we could have a little bit of control over local funding. We know this is a consistent amount of money that we get. We we work to think about how we want to allocate it and be very transparent with our community. Work hard to to try to to pass something, but I think thinking about revenue sources that we can control. Is gonna be helpful in us really being able to support our students in the long term, so.
I'm just not too certain if putting that up to a a ballot measure for a parcel tax is maybe the best way to do it, especially if, you know, it's only about. Less than ten percent maybe of our students who are who are using these resources. So if a minority of our students are fully dependent on these things, I'm not, I'm not too sure if maybe that's something you want to put up to. A simple popular vote for a popular, you know, parcel tax. Um I also think that these aren't, you know, unlike other items maybe on here, like when it comes to like technology. I think our counseling departments and social workers are essential. I do not think that this is something that we should. I think that we should be preserving them at all costs. That's why I'm I'm heavily leaning towards scenario one right now, because every single one of these counselors and social workers. Is forming such a unique bond with tens and tens of students at each of our school sites. And I wonder just, we we cannot possibly comprehend the impact if we take away even one of those relationships. So I understand that we want to keep these class ratios small, but before students can even come to the classroom to learn. They need to be in a mental state and a situation where they feel comfortable to learn.
Yeah.
They need to feel comfortable around their peers, comfortable in the classroom. They need to be willing to show up to school. So I think that if anything, we should be prioritizing the mental aspect and their and their well being before anything else. Um and in addition, scenario one does allow us an extra six hundred thousand dollars roughly um of woga room to work with. And these are things that we could be spending, for example, on the um middle school summer intervention programs, which are gonna be cut currently. Um and we could be financing things like that to help students who are falling behind with this extra, you know, extra. I don't want to call it wiggle room, but that's what we get. So just some things to consider as we we talk about these two options.
Yeah.
Well said. I think those are strong points and I I don't disagree with them whatsoever. I think the thing that is so tricky in this is when you push one lever up. The other one comes down and they're they're all attached to each other because we have to hit that number. Um one of the things that leans me a little bit more towards scenario two is um I do like the balanced approach to it. Where we pull back on some of those cuts that we were, you know, proposing to make for counseling. But just another thing that, you know, in the K through third, these are very formative years. I mean, it is so difficult to imagine bigger classes than they are now, going into those classes. Uh hearing the, my wife, you know, volunteers in our kindergartners class often, and it's like, without even that parent support in there. It's it's difficult to imagine how that functions. But also something that happens in those those years too is learning how to read and having teachers that can interact with you and help. Make sure that kids are staying on reading level. This is why our district adopted the science of reading curriculum many years ago. Because the data shows that where a kid finishes up in grades uh in the third grade on their reading level, whether that's at grade level, above or below. They tend to stay there for the rest of their academic career.
And that is why we have those early interventions that are so important. And it I think the downstream or unintended consequence of having uh higher ratios in those classes, there's gonna be a lot of unintended consequences, such as what's your future academic success? What do what do these things look like, which can lead to mental health issues, because you're not doing good in class and your peers are are doing better than you and you're struggling, you and you feel like you're in a really competitive world. So that's the difficulty with all of these levers that we're pushing and pulling. One affects the other. And then the one that keeps me up at night CJ referenced in his in his presentation, which is this letter that he received after we gave our first interim report. And there's a few lines in here that are are chilling to me. I'm just gonna read them really quick. After we submitted this, this is what the the county sent back. Um, they talked about our uh, they said the district projects deficit spending in current in current current and two subsequent uh fiscal years. Deficits, especially in the un unrestricted general fund, reduce the available fund balance, making it more difficult to respond to economic recessions and other financial difficulties. Districts, this is the crazy part, districts are advised to maintain a restricted reserve well above the state minimum reserve of three percent. These cuts will help us preserve a thin margin above three percent. So based on a review, the district does not meet its minimum reserve requirement in twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven without the ongoing budget reductions of twenty-four million for each of the twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven school years. Some of these proposals are marked as one-time as well, and I know that we're gonna realize this over a multi-year plan. They go on to say that what that CJ men- mentioned, this is kind of the the final thing that really chills me. Given these challenges, it's imperative to note that our approval comes with significant caution. And this is, that bothers me. And so at each one of these percentage reductions, if it affects you, it's a hundred percent of you. So the percentage doesn't matter. And I get that. If we don't do this, we lose local control or risk losing local control of how we do this twenty-four million. And it's gonna happen, one way or the other. And I think that that's the thing that is a that's the difficulty is when when Shelley and I sat in the budget advisory committee, it was amazing. We had forty, forty-five people there every time. Everybody had great ideas. We went through the budget line by line, section by section, really dug out everything. When it came to the crux, nobody wanted to put their name on what cuts that they would recommend. Nobody wants to do this. Nobody thinks any of these are good. There's a few things that you could argue, oh, like maybe consolidate some software programs. That was hundreds of thousands of dollars, not millions. And so those were the only easy ones left. And that's the that's the difficulty of the situation that we are all in and why I I do completely agree with what CJ is proposing on, we need to find revenue generation, but we need to plan with what we know now. And this also buys us time to do the kind of minimum cuts we need to get by on a razor-thin margin to hopefully realize some of those things with ADA, with the behavioral health, um billing reimbursement initiatives with looking at land use and things like that, but those are no guarantees. And if we don't meet that, if we come through this whole process short of twenty-four million, we already have the note. On that happy night.
Yeah, I I mean, can I say, I wish we didn't have to do any of this. Not happy about this at at all, but you know, uh, yes, to your last point, um, in order to retain a little control of our school district of what's best for us, for our students. We need to do this. And um, yeah, I had really hard time because uh, you know, uh, tonight listening to everyone and and all about the counselors, teacher librarians, um and all the other um positions, right? It's really, really hard. Um, for the option one or two, um yeah, I had a really hard time too, but I think uh at the end, because um because the the I think the largest, uh, the biggest change, I think between the two, right? Is really the elementary counselors. And um, I mean, some of the other uh counselors who are middle and high, but we are retaining, you know, some of those. It's really that, you know, just uh uh cutting all elementary counselors. I really hard had a hard time on that, but um, but remembering that actually, um we didn't have elementary counselors before, and it was really nice and we got um, uh, right, uh, used to their their valuable service. Um, and that for scenario two, because we are hoping, right, to retain the the smaller class size, um perhaps that would help, that would help the the to 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 cover what would um be missing, what will be missing or um yeah, uh, with the elementary counselors, I'm also leaning a bit to scenario two. Um, knowing that uh that we do preserve um most of the counselor, I think uh that the student support counseling, some of the other social workers and stuff like that for high school and um partly from middle school. Yeah, no, I don't like this at all.
Uh, one one thing that I will note, um, as a kind of a a a little glimmer in this darkness that we're in is you know, I I read about all these other districts that are going through similar things. Everybody has unique circumstances. But I did read about a district who decided not to cut any management and all the and all the all the cuts went into certificated and classified, and it made the news all over the place. That's not the ethos or the heart of this district at all. And I think that considering that the management team put this together and also uh signed on to something that that cut more significantly into management, which is, I think, the absolutely the right thing to do. I also commend you CJ for putting that presentation, that proposal together. Uh, cause that's hard when you're sitting with those people in this room, just like we're sitting with these people in this room. And to go, we're gonna move out and take the biggest step and ask you guys to follow. So thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I I I think for me, I I agree a lot with Travis and I think, you know, I my kids, myself, my family, we've all been affected by the amazing counselors, social workers in our school district. Um, I also know what it feels like as a parent to um have a child in a large elementary class size. We were in a different school district. My kids were in elementary school and they were in class sizes of, you know, my my daughter in a fourth grade class. It was a class size of thirty-seven. Um, I, you know, my my boys, when they were in K first and second, they were in class sizes of, you know, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty was kind of the the cap for that. Not not to say that that twenty-four is is a luxury, because it's not. It's just that I feel like that 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 has an impact as well. And I think um, we need to make sure that we're finding that balance, right? It it all is awful. How can we shore up across the district as best we can as we face these cuts? And I think making sure that we're that we're balancing it out, I yeah, I mean, that's, I, you know, the not so bad of two bad situations. They're both bad. I don't know how to how to define it, but um, I'm hopeful that um that that this will be something that we can ride out on the short term and that we'll see a shift in funding. We'll see a shift in priorities at the at the state and federal level. We'll find um, more consistent revenue at the local level, um that we can, we can bring back the things that um that we know we have seen have made a difference. Um it's just until we have the money, we we can't keep doing it to to Jesse's point of of losing local control of our district is um is not the answer for the students and families in our community, so. Okay. So are you looking for a motion, Madam President? I will move approval that we accept the reduction plan um under option two.
I second that.
The motion was made by board member Heard and seconded by board member Manzi. Roll call vote, student board member Hodges.
Aye.
Board member Brad.
Aye.
Board member Heard.
Aye.
Board member Vanzi.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we're on to eleven point three, consideration of resolution number fifty-eight, twenty-four, twenty-five, approval of provisional internship permit request. Eleven point three, consideration of resolution number fifty-eight, twenty-four, twenty-five, approval of provisional internship permit request, Melanie Jones.
Thank you, President Clark. Um, this is a standing item um that you are familiar with. Um, we are requesting approval tonight for a provisional intern permit that will allow additional time for a educator to meet subject matter competence in order to enter into an internship program for one of our SDC classes.
Okay. Any questions? We see these all the time.
Yeah, I moved to uh accept. Alright, I can uh the adoption of resolution of this resolution for the
I'll second.
Motion was made by board member Ordway and seconded by board member Vanzi. Roll call vote, student board member Hodges.
Aye.
Board member Brad.
Aye.
Board member Heard.
Aye.
Board member Vanzi.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Eleven point four, public hearing for the initial proposal for labor negotiations from the San Ramon Valley Unified School to the San Ramon Valley Education Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And we have a uh public comment on this, so I will let Assistant Superintendent Melanie Jones present, and then we'll hear the comment. I'll gavel into the public hearing.
Thank you. Um, so I just wanted to provide some context of the eight consecutive board items that are coming up. That may seem um, a little bit repetitive this evening, but each individual item is requested is required under the Brown Act. Um, so this public hearing is um held in order to sunshine the proposal um for the district and its labor negotiations with Servia. Um, and this provides, um, the next item will um get into the details of what that sunshine proposal will be.
Okay, so we have one card here from Nemesio Ordonis. Is he still here? Any comments or questions from trustees? Hey, so I will gavel out. And we'll go to, thank you, Melanie, eleven point five, consideration of acceptance of the initial proposal for labor negotiations from the San Ramon Valley Unified School District and the San Ramon Valley Education Association for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you, President Clark. Um, staff is requesting your approval for the district's initial sunshine proposal for negotiations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year uh with Servia. The articles that we are sunshining this evening are salaries, benefits, school year cal- calendar and class size.
Okay, any comments, questions from trustees? I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion was made by board member Heard and seconded by board member Brad. Roll call vote, student board member Hodges.
Aye.
Board member Brad.
Aye.
Board member Heard.
Aye.
Board member Vanzi.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Eleven point six, public hearing for the initial proposal for labor negotiations from the San Ramon Valley Unified School District to the California School Employees Association, chapter sixty-five, unit one and unit three for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Gavel in to the public hearing.
Thank you, President Clark. And again, this public hearing is for the district's initial proposal for labor negotiations uh with CSCA for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Any questions, comments? Alright. Gavel out. Eleven point seven, consideration of acceptance of the initial proposal for labor negotiations from the San Ramon Valley Unified School District to the California School Employees Association, chapter sixty-five, unit two and unit three for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Again, thank you, President Clark. Um, the substance of the district's uh sunshine proposal for uh negotiations with CSCA units two and three includes evaluation procedures, employee benefits, salaries, working conditions, oh, sorry, working out of class and reclassification for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, out. Eleven point eight, public hearing for the initial
We have to vote on that one.
Got it. Okay.
So I'll move to to uh I'll move uh to accept the initial proposal.
I'll second.
Motion was made by board member Ordway, seconded by board member Vanzi. Roll call vote, student board member Hodges.
Aye.
Board member Brad.
Aye.
Board member Heard.
Aye.
Board member Vanzi.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, eleven point eight, public hearing for the initial proposal for labor negotiations from the California Employees Association, chapter sixty-five, unit two and unit three to the San Ramon Valley Unified School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you, President Clark. This public hearing is for CSEA's initial sunshine proposal uh to the district.
Any questions? Okay, eleven point nine, consideration of acceptance of the initial proposal for the labor negotiations from the California School Employees Association, chapter sixty-five, unit two and unit three to the San Ramon Valley Unified School District for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Thank you. Uh, staff is accepting uh is requesting acceptance of the initial proposal from CSEA to San Ramon Valley Unified School District for the articles uh including salaries, working out of class and reclassification, leaves, transfers, promotions, demotions and reinstatements.
May I have a motion? And there's no questions.
I move approval of CSEA's initial proposal.
I'll second.
Motion was made by board member Heard and seconded by board member Brad. Roll call vote, student board member Hodges.
Aye.
Board member Brad.
Aye.
Board member Heard.
Aye.
Board member Vanzi.
Aye.
Board member Ordway.
Aye.
Board member Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Eleven point ten, public hearing for the initial proposal for labor negotiations from the San Ramon Valley Unified School District to the School Employees International Union for a successor agreement for the period of July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven. Gavel into the public hearing.
Thank you, President Clark. And again, this public hearing request is for um, the district's initial proposal for a successor agreement with SEIU uh for a successor agreement uh and negotiations for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Okay, any questions? Eleven point eleven, consideration of acceptance of the initial proposal for labor negotiations from the San Ramon Valley Unified School District to the School Employees International Union for a successor agreement for the period of July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
And thank you, President Clark. And finally, this last um sunshine proposal acceptance request is from the district to SEIU. The substance of our initial sunpre- sunshine proposal includes evaluation procedures, health and welfare benefits, and salary and allowances for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year negotiations process.
Any questions? May I have a motion to approve eleven eleven?
Uh, I'll move to approve uh eleven eleven, the initial proposal.
I'll second.
Motion was made by board member Ordway and seconded by board member Vanzi. Roll call vote, student board member Hodges.
Aye.
Board member Brad.
Aye.
Board member Heard.
Aye.
Board member Board member Manzi?
Aye.
Board member Ordway?
Aye.
Board member Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we still have a little business to do and we're nearing the ten o'clock hour, so we're gonna need to take a vote if we wanna continue.
I move to extend the meeting till eleven o'clock and hopefully we won't need all that time.
Thank you.
I'll second.
The motion was made by board member Heard and seconded by board member Brad. Roll call vote, student board member Hodges?
Aye.
Board member Brad?
Aye.
Board member Heard?
Aye.
Board member Manzi?
Aye.
Board member Ordway?
Aye.
Board member Clark?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, so we're to eleven point twelve, consideration of approval of new course proposals and we are gonna have our executive director of curriculum and instruction, Debbie Pettish. Sorry to keep you up so late.
Good evening, uh, President Clark, distinguished members of the Board of Education and, uh, SRVUSD Cabinet. Uh, thank you so much for the opportunity to present our new course proposals for twenty-five, twenty-six and beyond. Uh, we are bringing them here tonight for your approval. I'd like to begin by addressing a really important aspect of these proposals, which is their financial implications. And so with the exception of some of the visual and performing arts classes, of course, we refer to them often as VAPA. Um, the new courses do not come with any additional cost to the district. Some of the VAPA courses, there are some associated costs and those will be paid through Prop twenty-eight funding. We've talked about Prop twenty-eight several times over the last couple of years since it was passed by the state of California. Uh, I believe it was in, uh, two thousand twenty-two. And the purpose of Prop twenty-eight is to ensure that, um, school districts across the state of, uh, California are either expanding and or enhancing their VAPA offerings to students. And the only way that we can spend Prop twenty-eight funding is on VAPA, um, either supplies or VAPA personnel. And so it's not that we can, it's not like we can divert that funding to some of the other programs or things that we talked about this evening. So it's also important to emphasize that we do not allocate additional FTE or people to teach these classes at the secondary level. Um, FTE is really distributed based on student enrollment and not whether or not a site is choosing to offer a new course, for example. And really, we, we go with the students' vote with their feet. So with these classes, like really most of our classes that aren't mandated by the, by the state of California or by SRVUSD to graduate, uh, if students really show a sustained interest, then those classes tend to run. If they don't, then they tend to kind of fall by the wayside. So, in order to get started, um, you can see we will have seven new courses at the middle school level, including two course name changes that we wanted to bring to you tonight. So the seven courses include create and design, fundamentals of graphic arts and fundamentals of video production and filmmaking. And you can see there on the slide, in addition to the board packet, we have the course description, descriptions, uh, which will go into the course catalogs if these courses get approved tonight. We also have, um, several other VAPA classes, including wind ensemble, cadet or sixth grade orchestra, concert orchestra, symphonic orchestra and chamber orchestra. And what you'll see there is essentially our, um, middle school offerings in band um, already have quite, um, a bit of differentiation where orchestra classes didn't. And so what you see in these new courses is really a reflection of differentiating for our orchestra students, um, like we do already for our band students. And then you'll see there, we're also bringing two name changes, um, so treble choir and tenor bass choir, um, to replace girls and boys choir. For our high school proposals, uh, we have five new courses and one name change. So we have astronomy and space science. Uh, we of course have done board workshops and talked before about introduction to ethnic studies, which again is a state of California requirement for all students, um, who will be freshmen in next year's, uh, freshman class in the year twenty-five, twenty-six. We have peer advocates two, um, which is essentially, it used to be called peer counseling, but we are suggesting a, a name change for peer advocates one, um, I'm sorry, from peer counseling to peer advocates one. And then we would have peer advocates two that we would be adding this year, in addition to honors band and honors orchestra. So again, I bring them here for your approval and I'd be, of course, more than happy to any, answer any questions that you might have.
Yeah, I do have a question, um, but thank you for, um, these courses. I know the Prop twenty-eight is like a bright spot in what we have to do tonight. But, um, yeah, I, I just, uh, again, going back to the funding for these, I know that, you know, either Prop twenty-eight or, you know, there's no other funding because we might already have, right, FTE and stuff. But for some of the classes, like in the middle school visual art, sorry, video, video production where it says use of camera equipment, so there is some equipment. And then also for some of the other, um, you know, VAPA, um, like instruments and things like that. Uh, would, uh, the students or parents be asking to fund, like bring their, you know, purchase or rent or something, some equipment or instrument, or do we have already for them? How's that, or Prop twenty-eight?
It, it depends which, um, materials that you're describing. Some things we already have and some things we would have to purchase, but actually both of the classes that you see on the slide do qualify as visual and performing arts. And so we would be able to use, you're able to use up to, I think, nineteen percent on materials like you're describing. And so all of that would be covered. Now, some of the programs, of course, do ask for parent donations, but they could not run just based on those donations only. Those would kind of be above and beyond.
And is it still the case that musical instruments are provided by the family in most cases?
You know, I would have to double check with our TSA, um, our teacher on special assignment in VAPA. Um, so I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Cause I mean, historically, if you were gonna take up the trumpet in fourth grade, you went and rented a trumpet or bought a trumpet.
I believe it's incumbent upon us to, to provide those instruments. Now, if that's something that you wanted, like, you know, something that was, um, really unique to you or was kind of above and beyond. But since it's a, since it's a course that we offer, it's really incumbent upon us to be able to offer all the supplies or the books or whatever it may be for that particular class, including instruments.
So we currently provide instruments?
We, we do. Several of the sites do have instruments. So to answer your question, yes, in fourth and fifth, they do rent. But if there is a student who would like to participate in band and is not able to.
Oh, of course, if you can't afford one, but in general, most students bring their own instruments, correct?
Okay.
That was my question, what's, what's typical?
Thank you.
Obviously, we would support a student who couldn't so they could participate. I just wondered, oh my gosh, are we now buying, you know, a hundred violins?
I was thinking about the same.
I rented a violin.
So, so that aspect is the same, but we now do much better buy our kids that, that wouldn't be able to pers- participate if they had to bring their own.
Yeah, exactly. In large part because of Prop twenty-eight, um, especially at the high school level. I mean, each of our high school, high schools are given hundreds of thousands of dollars each year through Prop twenty-eight in order to run sections, buy materials and, and things of, of this nature.
Yeah. And a lot of the really big instruments, I think, we've always had, which is why one of my kids chose to play the tuba because he didn't want to take a trumpet back and forth. So he became the tuba player.
Debbie, I've got one quick question, just because I've had so many constituents ask me about it over the last year, just to ask it again publicly. And I know you and I and your, your team have talked a lot about the introduction to ethnic studies class. Did, I know because of AB one-on-one, we, we are going to put in an ethnic studies class. Is this a time that we're talking about curriculum and ideas behind it, or will that be presented at a later date, or what's the thought behind that?
Thank you so much for asking that, trustee Manzi. This is just an approval to add that course um, to our course descriptions that will eventually go into our course catalog. So the initial step in this process was changing our board policy for freshmen starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, switching out world geo for ethnic studies. This is kind of the second part of that process in that we have to get this course description approved officially by the Board of Education. Um, the way it's written, which is at a very general, you know, very general level. Then the next step in the process will be bringing to all of you for preview in March and then eventual, hopefully, approval in April of the curriculum materials. And those materials will be on display between the March and April meetings. So anybody from the community can come and view them and provide their feedback.
Yeah, and thank you, and thank you to your entire team too, for answering so many questions. And it, it gives me the ability to answer those questions back to my constituents, so thank you.
I have a question about the ethnic studies because we were on a, a webinar yesterday with the CSBA and they were talking about that the state has not released the funds that are supposed to come along with the ethnic studies. And if that doesn't get triggered, that the requirement may be put off later. Do you know anything about that?
Great question. We, we, uh, you know, it's as they like to say, an unfunded mandate. I mean, we did, in all fairness, get some money, um, to do professional development. It's really not enough money to purchase a book, not that we would necessarily purchase a book for ethnic studies, there's none that currently exists. But we do have to support of, of course, our staff in developing, um, online educational resources that are consistent across. But I am not, I've heard some rumblings of that, but I've not heard anything definitive either way.
I, I can only say that that is the same thing we've heard from the state level. I don't anticipate that they have gone this far to not release the funding. I anticipate it'll probably be, uh, part of a trailer bill or, or budget adoption or, or approval process. But that is, I think, the way it's written in, in.
And it just takes away that they can't mandate it. You can still go ahead without the money.
Oh, yeah.
It's just an escape for.
Right.
They were just saying that if it, it comes with that trigger, so if they don't fund it, then.
Then you don't have to do it.
Right, right. Uh, we do have one public comment.
I, I had a couple of questions.
Okay, go ahead.
No, I'm on the end. I'm so for the create and design class, um, it, there's, there's an existing media arts class, I believe, in middle school. Is this the same in a name change? And then it said in the description that it provides access to Perkins funds. I'm curious what that is.
Thank you for asking that, trustee Brad. So essentially, um, that will now qualify as a CTE course. So it can be used as the first course in a pathway if students continue in that particular pathway, um, when they move on to the high school level. So it's essentially the same course, you're right, but we have to get it approved again because now it will qualify as a CTE course if a teacher has a CTE credential to be able to teach it. If they do, if it qualifies as a CTE course and the teacher has their CTE credential, then it could qualify for Perkins funding as well.
Okay, alright, okay. And then with the astrology and space science class, is there an intent, a goal for that to become an A to G requirement? Or will that be an elective? I'm assuming like marine bio, I think that's an elective.
And that's a great comparison. It will be an elective. There's no intention in making it a requirement. And thank you for bringing that up. I'd really be remiss if I did not thank, um, the staff members who worked really hard on these course proposals. Just because they're really passionate about teaching a certain thing or, or really giving kids the absolute best environment they can. And astronomy, I think, is, is one really good example of that. The teacher was really passionate, put it forward. Again, they'll put it out in the course catalog and they'll see, um, who signs up for it, how many sections they can have. And then they'll make some decisions there. Um, one school put that particular course forward, but any of our high schools could choose to add that to their course catalog if they feel that that's a, a really adequate, uh, complement to their existing science courses.
Was, was that San Ramon Valley?
It was.
It was, yeah, yeah, I noticed they had a lot, which was nice to see.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I know that marine bio at, at Cal is a very popular class and I think those kind of niche science classes really spark, um, kids, which is, is, is good.
We do too. Yeah, I was very excited to see that.
Yeah, yeah. And then I just want to note that I just really appreciate, um, the name change with the gendered choir names to something that's, that's not so binary. And I, I appreciate that. And I think that that's, um, a good step forward.
So overdue, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so we have a comment card, Mike Arada.
Thank you for your patience. Critical race theory, the first book shown in the sign, has been a textbook in your initial ethnic studies course. A key statement in the book, quote, "For the critical race theorist, objective truth like merit does not exist, at least in social science and politics. In these realms, truth is a social construct created to suit the purposes of the dominant group." The second textbook, Rethinking Ethnic Studies, is recommended by the Zen Education Project, named after Howard Zinn, whose four hundred twenty-three page FBI file details his nineteen forties and fifties involvement with Communist front groups. This book is anti-racist, is effectively a racist caricature of anti-racism. It capitalizes every race but white. And the author says that being racist against white people is not a thing. So it's okay, she says, for her to have a prejudice against white people, quote unquote. Unit one of the previous ethnic study syllabus here cited one of your ridiculously expensive consulting outfits to say that students would, quote, "Examine the presence and role of whiteness." Unit two was all about intersectionality, identity and bias. Unit three was about hegemony, power, privilege, posi- uh, posi- uh, excuse me, posit- uh, positionality, patriarchy, sexism and misogyny. Meanwhile, one of your adopted textbooks stamped racism, anti-racism and you recommends the vile misogyny of straight out of Compton as a source of change and empowerment. Three more units rounded out the course with such topics as reparations and community organizing. Recommended course materials included critical race theory, socialism and DEI, which in reality stands for division, exclusion and indoctrination. SRVUSD's course catalog said your version examined power and privilege through the lenses of race, ethnicity, gender, class, ability and religion. Students were to think deeply about intersectional identities and bias and involve themselves in an action project to promote collective empowerment rather than constructive civic engagement. This being SRVUSD, wherein the radical CTA teacher union controls policy and practice, your course presented the so-called liberated or left-wing model of ethnic studies. The lineup for the new course appears to do the same. It focused previously on, quote, "Power structures, repression, imperialism and colonization." In contrast, what is called the constructive model of ethnic studies empowers students to dream big and rise to challenges. It works to build intergroup understanding and a range of political perspectives on solving problems. It avoids racialized generalizations. It assesses history and historic persons truthfully. It teaches how to think rather than what to think. Unfortunately, the instructional objectives listed for the new ethnic studies course show that it will repeat the left-wing biases and subversive disinformation of the old course. That's regrettable if that's the direction you wound up taking.
If it's agendas, can I respond? That, okay. No, and I, I appreciate that, Mr. Arada, because those are concerns that I have, as well as many of my constituents have. Um, and conversations that I've had with, um, Debbie Pettish and her, her team. And really stating straight out, are we doing, so it's, it, it can be called liberated or critical.
Or constructive.
Yeah, or constructive. So liberated, critical is one and constructive is the other. And you're right, there's two models of approach with that. Um, Debbie and her team have been very, uh, open to concerns and feedback. And I don't, I, the, the proof is gonna be in what's the actual curriculum. But I would say that the, the conversations have been very constructive and, and we're hoping to provide something that's beneficial as well. Cause I, you know, I do have reservations about a, a critical approach because those are from critical race theory that stems from the Frankfurt School of Marxism. So I get it. I, I know what you're saying. And those conversations are being had. I, I appreciate your feedback. And I think, you know, there's still more to be seen as this, as this course develops. But your, your, um, your comment is not unnoted.
Unpro- appropriate for me to comment further?
I don't know.
Um, but when I'm looking at the major instructional objectives for the course in the course description that we, we just approved, one, pursue justice and equity. Two, work towards greater inclusivity. Three, further self-understanding. Four, develop a better understanding of others through empathy. Five, recognize intersectionality. Four, develop a better understanding of others through empathy. Five, recognize intersectionality. Six, promote self-empowerment for civic engagement. Seven, support a classroom community focus. And eight, develop interpersonal communication. That sounds like it leans more towards the one that
Yeah.
you were mentioning.
Exactly, and I, and I think that Debbie and her team are working really hard to, as this being a new course of what it is and what it isn't, cuz I think that's where we get into the sticky situations. And we really want the first year of this course to be something that shines throughout the community, not something that is dogging us, so.
Which was a big part of why we wanted it to be in ninth grade.
Right.
To set the, the community of high school, not wait till eleventh or twelfth grade to rile things up.
I'll make a motion to approve um the
I gotta find all the new courses.
All the new courses.
Second.
Oh, yours, you get it, Susanna.
The motion was made by Board Member Brat and seconded by Board Member Ordway. Roll call vote. Student Board Member Hodges.
Aye.
Board Member Brat.
Aye.
Board Member Hurd.
Aye.
Board Member Van Zee.
Aye.
Board Member Ordway.
Aye.
Board Member Clark.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, we're on to twelve point one informational items. First reading of revisions to board policies and administrative regulations. Assistant Superintendent Christine Juargo.
Thank you, President Clark. Uh, tonight we bring forth several um board policies and administrative regulations for their first reading. I know there are several here that you had to review, so we're ready for any questions or clarifications. This is just a first read, so the next meeting they will come back to you, so if there's any changes or questions, we're happy to answer those tonight. I, I did wanna just add that they are compliant with CSBA and any current um education or law that has been put forth, so all those edits are reflected in these um updates.
Okay.
Yeah, I thi- I think the only thing that was tripping me up, but I kinda answered my own question as I continued to read. Um, and this is just for anybody else who had read deeply into it as well, is in the parental involvement one. There's a lot of language that was removed up top, such as like, you know, shall be making um initiative, you know, superintendent designate, shall be making initiatives jointly with parents, and, and I saw that those strike-throughs occurred. But then I really see that they're added down there. So it, it's kind of like a a rewording, modification, modernization policy. Um, so I was glad that that, you know, that, that spirit behind that, it was maintained.
Okay, that was an informational item, so there's no action needed. So we're on to administrative matters, so Board Member reports. Laura?
Yeah?
I hope everyone had a great break and that the start of the semester um is going well for everybody. Um, so thinking back to pre-break, we, we, most all of us, I think maybe all of us went to the, the Santa Monica Valley Ed Fund um holiday party. That was lovely. Thank you um to Vanessa and her team. Um, and then I, this year I participated in the iQuest interviews at Cal. Um, I did the virtual version and um it was, it was wonderful. Um, very impressive young um people and the hard work that they're doing and the skills that they're learning. And I really appreciate um the staff that runs those programs. And then um I wanted to take a second to apologize to the teachers at Windermere Ranch. I was supposed to be there on Friday and I had on my calendar Monday to help make phone calls um to um the legislature and the governor about um, about additional funding. So I just wanted to apologize for my mistake. I, I live by my calendar and if I get it wrong, it's wrong, so. Thank you.
I just had one thing to share from before break. Um, the traffic program always hosts a appreciation thing for the drivers right before the holidays and it just, I try to go every time and it just always amazes me when you sit down with the drivers and they start talking about how much they love working here and driving our kids to school. And even they drive all the way down from Concord and, and drive through our winding little streets and they're, they're just so dear and they really care about our kids, which is nice.
I know it's late, so I'll keep it quick too. Other than budget, budget and more budget, um, I did trustee office hours yesterday, which went great. Most of that was about budgets, um rightfully so. And then also sat through the um uh, a webinar on the twenty twenty-five um governor's proposed budget and implications and kind of, you know, trying to look into the crystal ball type thing. Um, and I think actually a lot of, uh, most of us sat through that. So anyways, that's what I've been up to.
Uh, I only have a couple of things also just to add. Gosh, way back before holidays. Um, I got to see Coyote Creek first grade play. Dino Stars, really cute. Uh, so yes, thank you. Um, keep, keep inviting me to those cuz I love those. Um, and then uh also, I think Laura mentioned it, we all kinda um attended the Education Foundation uh Holiday Mixer. I also um, I had a chance to as liaison to attend Endowment, their Endowment um committee meeting. And I just wanted to take the, the opportunity to thank both the foundation and the Endowment Committee, Endowment Committee who, oh, uh, and I also got a chance to um attend the Doughty Valley Solutionary Academy. I think we, several of us did, uh, presentation, the capstone presentations. And that, actually, interdisciplinary cohort called Solutionary Academy at Do- Doughty Valley um High School is funded uh this year partly by um, a, a large part by the uh Endowment Committee. And so I wanna thank them and um, and thank their, I believe, their ongoing support for the mixture as well while we're going through this bu- budget, um, you know, crisis type thing. So I just really, really wanna thank um the, the foundation as well as, as the Endowment Committee for that, for, for supporting us. Thanks.
So I have a couple of things, um mostly committee meetings. Uh, grade reform is moving forward. I think um here pretty soon is Travis had alluded to, we're gonna have something to present, which is gonna be a culmination of many, many years of work uh on the part of many, many teachers and uh Chris George and lots of input from students, and it's been a really great experience. Uh, Social Emotional Wellbeing Committee had their meeting and um moving forward on new things to kind of consider for the coming year. Uh, and Jessie and I had Town of Lia- oh, you didn't go. Ah, yeah, okay, so. No, I, you're always there. Um, Town of Lia- uh Town of Dando Liaison Meeting, which we heard all the things going on with the town, which are many improvements downtown and things like that. And then I too did the iQuest interviews and I always love doing those because I find kids that are smarter, way smarter than me, that I'm interviewing. So they're just so on it and they already have their resumes ready and it's just a really great program. And I, I wish we had in all of our high schools cuz it really does prepare them for being in the workforce and how to get into the workforce. You go.
Thank you very much. I know it's not my turn. But uh January is School Board Recognition Month and I wanted to take just a moment. And uh I know in today's, in tonight's meeting, um it's, it's hard to engage in that spirit of celebration. But as the superintendent who's honored to serve this district and to work with this board, I wanna say thank you because what we did tonight in terms of budget reductions is not why any of you decided to run for office. It's not why I chose to become a superintendent. Um, it's not why any of us do the work. But this is the work that was in front of us today and I am confident that the work has been thoughtful. I appreciate the board's engagement and, and critical discussion over the last two meetings. And I just wanted to make sure I took a moment to say and acknowledge that I am grateful and I believe many are grateful for the service that the board provides to this district and the community.
And with that, we're adjourned.